I call our board retreat to order and in attendance is Michelle Shu, Gordon Laffer, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, and myself. Kirti Hasijah Kaufman will be joining us shortly. So I just want to go ahead and welcome everyone. I know we are coming into this meeting with maybe some heaviness, so I just want to acknowledge that and hold space for that. I know I'm a little shaken up. So the first thing I want to do, and I had some things that were kind of maybe on the silly side set up for us to start with, and I'm going to go ahead and bypass those and just give us a chance to come into this space, maybe share a word or two about how you're feeling going into this meeting. And I don't know if anybody wants to start. We can just go in a circle. You don't have to give any exclamation on the same page with each other. And if nobody wants to, then we can skip that as well and just jump into taking care of business.
Well, I'll just say that it's nice to see people and it was great to be away from all of this for a while.
I appreciate people being here and taking the time to have conversation and talk about goals and us coming together as board and staff to try to chart a course for the future of the district. I'm very grateful.
Share, I'm feeling multiple realities all at once. I have been talking about this meeting all day with different folks from Rob to Gordon and everybody in between. And I am now feeling a little bit heavy and also hopeful that we can get some some good work done tonight together. Well, I don't want to cut anybody off if anybody else is interested in sharing. But if not, then we'll just go ahead and jump in.
I will say I really appreciate knowing so many things happened last year that we wouldn't know about until weeks, sometimes months later. So thank you so much for not letting us find out from a parent while we're picking up our kids or something. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, with that, I know everybody got a copy of the meeting agenda. After meeting with Rob today, I'm hoping that folks can be a little flexible with the the time that we were aiming for for each category. We might have, we might shift things slightly. So the first thing on the agenda is to talk about meeting agreements. And I think that most people probably understand the difference between agreements specific to our meetings versus those that we have previously referred to as our working agreements. But just to make sure, sometimes these are called norms, sometimes ground rules. I personally prefer meeting agreements because they emphasize the spirit of collaboration that I'm hoping that we go into this together with. These are, these are guidelines for us to shape the way in which we approach our meeting spaces, our collective meeting spaces and how we interact with. Um, so the idea is for us to do this collaboratively so that one benefit is that everyone gets the chance to express their own needs around what will enable them to participate fully. And sometimes we, it's easy to overlook that not everybody has the same needs and wants. And this gives us a chance to put them out on the table. Starting with an open conversation helps us to create that space that will work hopefully for everyone. And this doing so together gives us the power as a group versus if an individual, whether it's a facilitator or a chair imposes those rules on everyone. And so I think it's important also to note that no agreement will be perfect for everyone. It's important for us to not put into place any agreements that somebody vehemently is opposed to. So we're going to talk through them and we have a hopefully positive system for doing that. It's important to keep in mind that there's a difference between needs and preferences as well. So needs are things that people have to have in place and preferences are things that we can be flexible about. And I'm hoping that we all come into this conversation with that in mind, recognizing the difference between the two. It's important also that we really consider if there is a clear collective understanding of what the the need or the preference is that someone is expressing so that we're not agreeing to something that we don't understand what that would look like. And really, in order to be empowering and successful, group agreements need to be genuinely consensual. Everyone really needs to be able to to speak their mind about each one and have their voice valued and heard and held up just as much as anybody else is. So it's really important that we listen carefully to one another and at the end of the full meeting, we'll check in and make sure everyone is is on the same page as where we are as we move along. So again, everybody's input is welcome and valuable and please speak up if the suggested agreement doesn't work for you. Just because we work to set up agreements that everyone consents to, we have to recognize that this should be a living list that gets revisited. Sometimes people's needs or preferences change. Sometimes new members join the group. And and there's different circumstances under which we might find ourselves wanting to revisit this this list. So with that in mind, we're going to go through the needs and preferences that people submitted to Gordon and myself. And we're going to go through the list first without commenting. We're going to try to filter out all of the agreements where we have an immediate recognition and shared agreement that they are something we all value and want to see in place. So that will mean that we're going to use a scale, like a one to five scale. And I'm going to share my screen just so that I can, for me, I'm somebody when I can see what it is that I'm expected to do. So I hope I'm sharing the right thing. Are you guys seeing this one to five now on the screen? Yeah, okay. So we're going to go through each one. Gordon's going to read them and Rob is going to highlight them and expand them so we can see the full thing. And we're going to just non-verbally use our fingers one through five. So the one through five will be, number one is I fully support this. Number two is I support this, but I have reservations. Number three is I do not support this, but will not sabotage it. Number four is I fully do not support this. And so that's one of those that we're going to keep them, keep an eye out for. The fully do not support this is an important one. And number five is I have a few questions before I can vote. So all of the agreements that receive a unanimous one, we're going to push through right away. And then we're going to come back to them to talk about the ones that receive a five first and then move on to two and time willing, we'll move through the other ones. And if we run out of time, then we'll have to push those back until another time. Laurel, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, though the word sabotage is very if you don't support something to say that it's sabotage, to not agree with it, though it gets accepted by the majority. It, I mean, pretty much speaks to the fact that as a black person, most things get voted along and out, not saying that's happening here. But it's not sabotage for someone to say, no, this is inequitable. I don't appreciate it. So I would prefer a different language to say than sabotage because that is very, very strong language.
I am fully open to different language and and I'm open to subject suggestions. This is me borrowing the language from other groups, so I can appreciate that for sure.
My other language I've heard on that one would be, I don't support this, but I can live with it.
Does that work for you, Laurel?
I mean, yeah, not having my thesaurus open. That sounds funny.
Okay, so this is a PDF, so I can't change it right there, but please consider sabotage, strike through and but we'll live with it being the alternative. Thank you. I appreciate that from both of you. Laurel, do you have something else?
Nope.
Okay, Judy?
So are we going to be get, there's seven of us, and if we all turned in two to three things, so we're going to be hearing 14 to or more, 14 to 21 statements, is that what you're going to be reading to us in this activity? And then we want to get down to how many? We're just going to get them one at a time and vote, is that?
Yeah, the first round will just be moving through them, listening and not and taking the time to just simply listen and respond non-verbally. And then we'll come back to the ones that have an indication that they don't have full support. It might be optimistic on my part to think that we will be able to filter some out that we all agree on. But I think we might find ourselves pleasantly surprised that we're more in agreement on some than than we imagine.
So was I correct about the number, though, that you're going to be reading to us?
Not everybody submitted, not everybody submitted them. So off the top of my head, I'm going to say there's, and some people submitted more than two or three. So yeah, you're in the ballpark. Gordon?
Um, I just wondered if we could, Maya, if we could show people the list, like I can still read them and we can vote one at a time, but just so people aren't having to, I don't know.
That's exactly what we're going to do. Rob's going to post them in a second when I stop sharing. I just want to make sure everybody understands the one through five and to understand that five, when you say I have a question. I hope everybody understands that that doesn't mean that you do or do not support it. It just means that you need a little bit more information. So Rob is going to be the questions or the the needs and preferences that we all agree to. He's going to turn them into a color of his choice. And then those will be put aside so we don't have to use up time talking about the things that are givens. But yes, you will see them. Rob will highlight them and he will also note the the twos, threes, fours, and fives, so we can come back to the fives. And if everybody's comfortable with the one through five, we can just jump in. I had some kind of ridiculous ones to just practice with, but I'm not sure we're in the mood for silly. Unless somebody wants to practice. I can't see everybody, unfortunately. Judy, I still see that you have your hand raised, but I don't know if that's
No.
Okay.
You'll keep up the rating. Can we, will you email the rating system or put it in the chat so we can?
I will put it in the chat as soon as I get off this screen. One second. All right. So that's all you now, Rob, to share. And if you highlight them one at a time, then Gordon will go through them and we will give our one, two, three, four, fives.
Yeah, and and I have this up on a different computer than this iPad that I'm doing the meeting on. So if I could, if I could get Lisa, if you could send me another link to the meeting, I'll jump on so I can share this. Because I can't see it on this iPad, so.
Okay, and I'll come get your, I'll be right with you.
I just, I just need a quick link on that. I know you sent it once already, but it's no longer here.
I sent it twice because I forgot to edit the language. So please look at the second one and use that one.
So is this the jam board that you sent, Maya? Is that what you want? So you wanted me to share?
And you should go to the third frame. It's the one that has all yellow.
Yeah, all the, all the yellow, yep.
Rob, if you log into the public one, I can move you over your new device as a panelist. I sent you the link.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
All good. We'll get you.
Yeah, it's all fun technology. Oh, of course, my browser needs to be updated. I love this.
The next, your computer is going to shut down too. Because that's how it happens at my house.
Okay, so that is not working. I'll try to do on this iPad.
I give this part a two, just so we know.
Yeah. I apologize. It's my fault.
Well, Rob's doing it. I just want to emphasize that the reason that we're doing it this way is to really emphasize and prioritize the places where we agree so that we're not jumping into this eliminating people's needs or whatnot, so that people all can can feel that their voice and their input is seen and right there.
And is that reason we don't, didn't get it ahead of the time because this process is better for that? I was wondering if while we're waiting for technology, we could look at it.
Sure, I can send it via email to you.
But I didn't want to sabotage the process, so.
I didn't get everybody's hands until shortly before the meeting, so trickling into you not very cohesively.
I'm working on Plan C now. Sorry.
You want me to just take over instead, Rob, and then you can?
I'm gonna try, let me try one more thing here. I'm pulling up the jam board on this, this device, and I think I can get, get there.
So I'll send a screenshot of the jam board to everybody and just note that jam board is not very, it doesn't give you an endless space. So for these, the reason that Rob is going to highlight them is because it will give you the chance to to see the full body of the language. When we get to the goals, and I emailed folks about this, that when we get to the goals, we won't read through each one individually. You guys will look at them yourselves. So I'm hoping that people will feel comfortable.
Okay, so see if you can go into the chat right now and pull, pull that link and it should open up the jam board for you.
We're not going to be able to get on that like that.
Do you want me to just share it, Rob, if you're not able to share it?
Yeah, if you could share it, that'd be good.
I'll just, I'll just share it and then I can, I can do the
Highlights on this other computer, but if you just share it, then.
If I can get everybody in this school district to know that the board members can't just get on to your Google without an extra permission, so I would love for that to happen because that's always frustrating for me.
All right, can everybody see it now? Yes?
Yeah, I can see something, yeah.
Yeah, and then I can, I can make a note on it, Maya, to when, when people do their, do their ranking.
Okay, so I'll just pull them up for you, Gordon, and then, or you, yeah, you can also do it because you have access to it, I believe.
Okay, Maya, do you want me to, to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, so I mean, just to clarify, I know Maya kind of said this, but the idea of this part is to see if there are things that we actually agree on, which means if somebody says give something a four, which means they completely reject it, then it's not an agreement. And there are, there are other things, like some of the things here conceivably could be policy and policies we can adopt by a majority vote. That's not what we're doing tonight, but those things could be done another time. But for tonight, what we're doing is things that we can get unanimous consent on. So the idea in the first round is to identify things we have unanimous consent on and identify things that somebody says, no way. And then it drops off the list and then we'll come back and discuss the ones that there's some agreement, that there's disagreement about. So the first one is something we talked about a lot, which is removing speakers and attendees who discriminate against people because of race, ability, socioeconomic level, gender, or LGBTQ. And I guess I just, I
Religion.
I'm sorry?
Shouldn't religion be on here too?
Okay, we could add religion. And the one question that I have, I just wondered if there's a clarification thing, which is I know there are laws involved in this, and I would like to know, and I don't know if we do know, is there any other district in the country or local government body that has a policy on this that we can mimic? Or do we know clearly, can we remove people for being disruptive? Can we remove people for inciting, for doing something that we think is insightful behavior?
Are we discussing each one of these as they come up? Are we voting?
No, I'm sorry. I just wanted, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't you just vote a five on that? That's what I would do.
Well, I actually wanted to ask Rob, because I know this had come up earlier. And I wanted to see if there is any legal clarification that we know now before we vote on it. That's what, sorry for being long-winded, but and if the answer is no, then I agree, Judy, I would vote five, but but is Maya or Rob, is there, do we know anything legal or Andy?
The reason we put this one first is so that we could kind of report back that this one is on the, on the list of things that the person who's analyzing safety and security for us is looking into the how about this. So
Portland Public Schools has a, as part of their agreements to speak to the board, it's the last one, if you want to look it up.
Okay, so Andy, I see your hand is raised too.
Yeah, I was just going to offer that there is language in from Supreme Court precedent indicating that people can be removed from meetings or barred from attendance based on their use of fighting words is the the literal language. It's a 1942 case and it's getting interpreted potentially differently now than it was then. But I'm looking to gather more information and some clarity. And thanks, Laurel. I'll take a look at Portland Public's agreements because I wasn't aware of that. So duly noted here.
Yeah, I think, I think the question is, it is possible to do, it's just the how, how, how it would be done, whether it's a virtual meeting or in-person meeting, whether you have security at the meeting, there's just a lot of the process part of it is, is would, would need to be figured out.
Should we, should we put a five on that and we can come back to it at the end?
Are we not voting?
We are.
We are. It seems like we're not doing the process.
No, 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 you're right, Laurel. Why don't we, why don't we vote on this? And we're, we're going to just vote by people holding up their fingers.
Be able to see those, Rob?
I think, I think if, I have to scroll to see everybody, but
Yeah, Alicia?
I'm sorry, I thought we would have the little cheat sheet up. Did you send that to us in email, the one through five? I apologize. Take notes.
Oh, so Michelle, I got yours. Maya, what are you on that? Okay, Gordon? And Judy, I see you. Alicia?
Sorry, too.
Okay, and Laurel? Okay, I got yours, Laurel. All right.
Okay.
There were kind of all over the map on that, so we're going to keep that one yellow. Actually, we'll, I'll mark it, I'll mark it orange. Let's see if it changed it. Then there it goes. That means we discussed it and and we're kind of a wide range.
And which just means we're coming back to it, right? Because
Yeah.
This one, respect for my time and energy by showing up to meetings prepared without expectations of becoming experts on every topic.
Okay, so just go ahead. When you hold it up, I'll just try, try to look and see there. Laurel, go, go you first this time.
Who's my?
Whoever wrote this, we don't know who wrote this. I don't know who wrote this. So I assume it means anybody, any of ours.
They're talking about themselves.
No, 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 I assume this is a policy that would apply to all of us, basically respecting our time and energy, but that we would all show up to meetings prepared without expectations of becoming experts on every topic.
Okay, so that, Laura, I see you as a five, Alicia. One. Judy is a one. Gordon is a one. Maya, one. Michelle, one. Okay, so that one is fairly close. So I'm going to make that color blue.
But it's fairly close to me.
Only there's, there's only, there is only one. Fairly close means almost everyone was in agreement. There was one that had questions.
Okay, I, can I just, I thought anyone who had a five, it would be colored orange. Okay, can I just, I thought anyone who had a five, it would be colored orange, so we would get their questions answered. But maybe I was wrong about the process. That's what I thought was
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, Rob, maybe we'll just stick with either orange for revisit, or else change it to green for go, and then the others will leave for another time?
Or red for, or something, or cross out for being rejected. Closeness doesn't matter, it's just
Okay.
Read or not.
So, so this would be
Orange.
So orange is revisit, and this one would also be orange. All right, great.
Okay, "Having a way for board members to escape the meeting space quickly and privately."
I just Does everybody understand this is about our safety? This isn't, because you just are like, I need to leave right now.
Yeah, this is the physical, that we need to have a physical escape route.
Okay, I see one so far. And one, and everyone is a one on that. So I'm going to make this green. Is that right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
This is "Board use of the equity lens and identify a process to use it regularly."
And I see Alicia, one, Laurel, one, Judy, one, Gordon, one, Maya, one, and Michelle, two. So that is orange, correct? Or is it, or do we need straight ones to be agreed?
No, just we need to have nobody who says they have questions or opposes it altogether.
All right, there we go, that's green.
Use facilitators from outside of our community that are part of programs that understand racism and white supremacy. And I'm, I don't, I don't know who this is from, or if anybody wants to speak, but I'm guessing that this is specifically facilitators around. I don't know, I guess I won't guess if this is for particular kinds of things.
This is me, and it's all facilitators. If they don't understand, they don't know how to stop.
Thank you.
All right, so looking Yep, voting, so we see See Five, Gordon, I see you. Judy, Alicia, Laurel. Okay, so that one is orange.
Prioritize impact over intention.
I don't know.
See, Laurel, I see you. Judy.
Laurel, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but were you going to say you don't know what this means? Because I wonder
No idea.
There's just a short question, like, what does this mean if the person who wrote it is willing to just say here's what it meant, and then people can know what we're voting on?
Sure, I put that in, I can say that. To me, it means that if the impact of someone's intended statement is harmful, that the focus and prioritization of the conversation doesn't revolve around somebody hyper-focusing on their intent, and that the impact is what is prioritized.
Okay, so then let's, let's vote on that again.
Okay, Judy, I see you as a five. Laurel, one. Alicia, that's a three. Gordon is one. And Maya? One. Michelle? What? Okay, so that is orange to revisit.
Timely, transparent communication, especially from leadership.
Michelle, one. Maya, one. Gordon, one. Judy, one. Alicia, one. Laurel? One. Okay, so that's green.
Be curious.
Michelle, Maya, Gordon, one, Judy. Laurel, that's the one, I think, I see there, one, and Alicia.
I feel on this one, I need to vote five, because it says, before I can vote, I should have questions, and that would be curious, so I just feel like it's what I have to do.
I like it.
Thanks.
I will call it a green.
We'll call it one.
Active listening and practicing response to disagreement with a spirit of respectful inquiry.
All right, I see Alicia as a one. Laurel? The five. Judy, one. Gordon, Maya, Michelle, one. Okay, so that one is orange to review.
Acknowledging the harm that has occurred and working toward repair with mediation.
Michelle, one. Maya, two. Judy, five. Gordon, five. Two, two for Alicia, and a four for Laurel. All right, so this is Now, process-wise, is this because we had a four? Does this become a strike?
Yep.
Or is
It's off, yeah. It's gone. If anybody has more for anything than
All right, so the color, the color will make that is pink.
Board members extend some grace and curiosity when ideas and thoughts are shared.
Okay, Laurel is a one. Alicia is a one. One for Judy. One, Maya, and Michelle.
I'm going to interrupt quickly and say that obviously some of these are repeats, and one of the tasks that we'll ask of our new wonderful communications person is to wordsmith the agreement, so we don't have, you know, number two, be curious, number three, board members extend grace and curiosity, you know, so just to note that I did not want to take the task, and neither did Gordon, of eliminating anybody's voices before we had a chance to share them with everybody. So that's why you might see some repeats.
So Maya to that, and see, this is where, and I've been voting five if I wanted a clarification, but that was a great statement. I don't know if there is a deliberate reason to put some grace and curiosity, or it would be stronger if we just took out some. I don't know how, I don't know what that means. So.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we want to really get into wordsmithing, we can, but if it's really difficult to understand the spirit of the agreement, then we can dig deep into it.
If you're not wordsmithing on my part, it really is, what does that mean? Do I, you know, do we sometimes extend grace and curiosity and sometimes not? I don't know.
If whoever submitted that, if they want to speak to their attachment to the word some, or if that was just stylistic in your writing. It's okay, nobody wants to speak to it.
I think we had all ones on this one. Michelle, what was your ranking on this one? As written?
Yeah, I don't like the word some.
Okay.
Don't know what it means there.
So I'm just going to mark it a five.
Okay.
Okay, "Recognize eating time as a finite resource and make sure everyone gets their share."
One, Maya, five, Gordon, one, Michelle. One, Alicia, five, Laurel, and one, so not yet, orange.
Thank you. Agreement that we all read all the material in the packet before the meeting, so that we don't waste time by having that material presented during the meetings, and that we all do our best to send any questions we have about any agenda items to the chair by Sunday night before the meeting, so that staff can be prepared and have less anxiety about presentations, and so meetings can run more efficiently. This does not preclude the right of any board member to ask any question in the meeting itself.
Let's see, Judy.
So if it's not understood, ask.
Judy is a one, Laurel's a five. Alicia's a one, Gordon's a one. Michelle, Maya, one, so we're orange on that one.
The colors aren't getting changed. The last two are orange, is that correct?
Yeah, I forgot. I didn't hit save properly, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback.
And was the one before that also supposed to be orange? I don't
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay, thanks. "Having a board that follows public meeting laws and avoids ethics violations."
No.
One for Michelle, five for Maya, Gordon's a one. A four. A one. This is a
My four isn't against it, it's already a rule. That's all it is, so.
Timely and transparent communication from board and district leadership, as well as other board members, to keep all board members informed and up to date.
We can do.
Well, it's also not totally legal, so I'm gonna
So I see Laurel's, is that a four, Laurel?
Yeah.
Okay, four, one. Five for Gordon. One and one.
So that one should be, that last one should be pink.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think when Maya hasn't opened as well, if I hit save, and then she saves it without, so that's what happened on that one, so no worries.
Board members commit to directly communicate with other board members to clarify understanding and clear up misunderstandings. Have a way to get at the intent of a communication or action, and to understand the impact it had on others.
Okay, Gordon's a five, one for Judy. Is that a four for Laurel?
Yeah.
And three for Maya.
You know, if it's important to people to discuss the last two ones, the way they're written, they're against public meeting laws. So there'd be allowed to be a ton of clarification, because I'm not going to if people are connecting with me, because I think that's the rule that they have to connect with me about something, and I don't know who else they've connected with about it, that concerns me. That's my reason for the last two.
So just on, on I don't know if this is important to other people, but just on clarification, then Laurel, if we, if we put that as a and I'm not asking you to change your vote, if we said that that was a five, and one of the questions that had to be asked is, is this legal, or how much of this is legal?
The way it's written, it's not, neither one of them is legal.
Laurel, would you be comfortable, we listed them as questions, so we could ask if the wording could change to address that legal issue?
Yeah, I mean, if that, if it is important, because the other people have voted for it, if they want to change it to orange, that's fine. I just wanted to put my, in as I read this, I see them as public meetings violations, and I don't I don't put myself in that vulnerable space.
So should I change those to the orange?
I think that would be great at this point.
Okay.
Always get rid of them, if they can't be legal.
The board agrees to engage in dialogue in which everyone feels safe, safe, welcomed, and encouraged to express their point of view and share their ideas. All other board members listen with an open mind and heart, with the intention of understanding what the speaker is communicating.
All right, see a five for Gordon, a two, a two. A five, three, a one, so we're visiting that.
Board declares that there is no such thing as racism against people who present and identify as white.
Five, a one. Five. Five, so just one, two. Got some more?
If a board member raises a point of personal privilege because they believe another board member is mistreating them or acting inappropriately, the chair has to address that issue before continuing the discussion.
See, Michelle, a five, Maya, Gordon, ones.
This is already part of Robert's rules. That's what I thought.
But
So I don't, I'm going to put four, because it's our, I hate redundant
Okay, but
Not an agreement, if it's already, we've already are part of Robert's rules. If you say point of order, the meeting has to stop.
Okay.
Alicia, are we trying to speak?
Yeah, so this says point of personal privilege, not point of order. So I'm wondering if the person who wrote it differentiated between that? They are two different things.
This, this is mine, and no, I don't know that much about Robert's rules, so I don't, I don't know what the difference is between those. I just meant that sometimes it's happened in the past, and then we kind of continue the discussion without the issue being addressed. So that was the only intent. So if it, if the thing is that you call it a point of order, and then that's already in Robert's rules, that's fine. I didn't know that.
So is this becoming pink then? Is that where we're at?
I think so.
Okay.
So, um. We were originally scheduled to take a quick break right now, do we wanna do that? It's a few minutes beforehand, do we wanna do that or do folks feel like they wanna continue with the momentum?
I don't need a break.
I, I need a little break.
Welcome, Kirti, before everybody jumps onto.
Hi and bye all. We'll see you on the.
Um, so, Kirti, I'll, I'll, it sounds like we're gonna take a little break, um, let's come back at 5:03. And, um, Kirti, if you just wait two seconds, I'll explain what this whole color schema thing is that's on the name.
Sure, no worries. I'm here.
So, um, these are the meeting agreements as opposed to the working agreements, so specifically to guide how we meet with one another that people submitted. And, uh, the ones that are green are the ones that received unanimous support, please look at those because if there's any there that you're like, no way, then that changes the color of them and you have the power to do that and it's totally reasonable and your voice and input is deeply valued.
Thank y'all and, and sorry.
The red, no worries, um, I hope that meet the parent or meet the teacher went well and your kids are happy with their placements and all that fun stuff. Um, pink is, uh, are ones that received, um, no's. Um, and they received no's from, for different reasons, um, some of them are because they already are either policy or else state statute. And, um, so that's why some of them received votes of no's. So that's, those are now off the table, but they're not necessarily, um, things that aren't part of our board practice, if that makes sense, like I'll use this as, this as an example, like, we don't have, we don't have a choice about public meetings laws, that's not only board policy, it's also state statute. Orange are ones that received, um, uh, we did it with a scale of five, so, and I can put that back in the chat, because I know you can't see that chat, but, um, a scale of five, which was like one equals I fully support through, um, I'll just put it there so you don't have to have me read it because you can read perfectly well yourself. And so the orange ones either had a wide mix of, um, one, twos and threes, or else they had fives where people asked questions, want to have questions or want to have questions answered, I'm sorry. So that's, that's the color scheme, um, part of the issue with Jamboard is that the really long ones, you can't see the ends of their sentences unless they're highlighted, so, if need be, I can, um, uh, I can, I can change that. Hold on, I'm making my screen wider because apparently y'all can see my photos. I'm glad there's nothing exciting on my desktop, but.
And I was, uh, on my work computer, so I'm trying to like, it's like, okay.
Everything's hit her, I hope, am I good now?
Yeah.
Okay. Most of them are probably my daughter, so it's all good, but nobody needs to have access to my family right now.
It's just like, it's like every time you launch a Zoom meeting, right, it's always popped up in your tabs every, just think on there.
Yes, all right, so, um, I'll leave that there, and we have six minutes left for anybody that's still, um.
Yeah, go take a break, my, I'll be here.
Just gonna run quickly to do that.
Hi, Kirti.
Hi, Michelle.
Why were you late?
I was, uh, it was back to school day today, so meet the teachers from four to five. And Skashni's first time at Adams, so.
All right.
You're in there.
You get a pass.
I know, I like, I hitched a ride with a friend, they're still out there having their shaved ice and hanging with the. Yeah. No, this week is a, this week is, um, yeah, it's, it's packed.
Yep.
And I leave Thursday morning for Dubai.
Oh, my God.
Which like I forgot today wasn't actually Monday, so I was like, oh, that's the day after tomorrow.
I know, it sneaks up on you.
So the oranges could have anyone from like, more than one person to, up to six?
Orange just mean it's, be, just means it's not green.
Yeah.
Lot to go, and then pink is like.
Yeah, the public meeting laws and things, yeah, we don't have a.
We, we already have public meeting laws, but, but mine was acknowledging harm that has occurred and, uh. Yeah, that. That got nixed by one person, which I don't think is fair, but, uh, I fully do not support this schema, so.
Yeah, to me, actually, the ones I was looking at, like, doing on is, is the harm one and the one next to it, the act of listening and.
Well.
It's that and the one next to it, like, they're kind of in the same way, which is like. The grace one, but I don't really know, um, they seem kind of.
No, we haven't, we haven't acknowledged harm.
No, I was saying, no, I, I would definitely, like, green that for me, or like, that's a thing on there, it's the, it's, and then I'm debating on the two, on either side of it because they, I feel like are getting the same sentiment, but in different ways.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
One thing I forgot to mention, Kirti, is that with both these and the board goals, there's some that, um, are really close, if not the same essential thing in spirit, just worded with people's different wording styles. So in, instead of eliminating them or combining them, I wanted people to see that their input was here and valued, so that's why they're repeated, but when we make a list, we're not gonna have, like, be curious and also be curious worded differently, if that makes.
That seems like, yeah, um.
Rule two, be curious, rule three, be curious in.
Continue to be curious and guess.
So that, um, Michelle, I, I think that it's fair for you to bring up that you're not necessarily comfortable with one person getting to veto, um, when we all come back together.
Oh, you heard that?
Oh, we're in a meeting.
If we're, I mean, there's consensus and then there's, everyone voted one except one person, you know, and. And I don't think that was the case in that particular one, but, um, yeah, it would have been, is this being recorded right now?
I don't have access to, oh.
Yeah, it is, we are, we are in, we're live, yeah, we're live, we have an audience.
We're live and.
Have an audience?
Yeah. If you're curious. You can go to participants.
Oh, I see, hey, y'all.
It's a lot of parents on the playground when I just left, so I'm assuming that the audience isn't as large as usual.
Yeah, I just love who's attending.
Yeah. Now, I mean, we're all excited about the. Classes and, um. My fourth grader is in a class with at least four of her. Closest besties, which I'm kind of. The poor teacher, uh. A Starbucks gift certificate now or?
Yeah, they're professionals.
I know, I'm excited about that this year, though, they, both of the girls are excited about actually being back in school, so.
That's because they're still little.
Yeah, I know, gonna like, hang on to this as long as I can until it changes appropriately.
Yeah, no, that's so sweet. I'm happy for you.
Yeah, we think we're just so, after a month of being gone, like, also really just craving routine, at least the girls are, so.
Yeah, today's a big day for a lot of kids and families, it's really exciting.
Yeah, Kashni is like, cause like she was in private kindergarten this past year because she's young, right, so she's starting at age five. At first grade, so she's like, super thrilled to be in like, big people's school.
Yeah. So, Kirti, I was muted, but the voting, um, it was in the chat and I don't know because you've, you joined later, if you can see it, we should probably put it in again for you.
I did that right away.
Thank you, great.
I walked her through the color coordinating and coding or what, rather, too.
Session just yelled green out, like, just in the middle of a.
You can.
I like number three, but I can live with it, I think there's a lot of. It's gonna be a. Maya, did we just go down card by card, like, tab by tab?
We did.
Okay, I can just go ahead and tell you mine?
Sure, with, um, yeah, we were supposed to start two minutes ago, so, uh, why don't we go ahead and, oh, did one of them just disappear completely?
No, it moved.
No, it overlapped.
It's the prioritized impact over intentions got moved on top of a.
Somebody's organizing, that's great, thank you, I, I assume it's probably Rob because I don't see Gordon, um.
Me have accidentally moved it when I moved the chat function, so I don't know.
I don't think you can move it.
Okay.
Because it's on my screen. Um, do you wanna? Do you wanna, um, tell, tell us if out of the, the green ones, are there any that you are not?
No, I'm, I'm fine with all of those.
Okay, so our green stays green, um, out of the, um, and I guess the orange ones we're gonna be going back through anyway, so, um.
Okay, if we're going back to the oranges, then, yeah, all right, then I'll just wait.
As Laurel and Andy, I mean Laurel and Gordon come back, and I know Andy might have to step out, so whenever you need to do that, Andy is fine, no worries on our end. We have Rob to keep us in line. Well, um. You see Laurel, so I guess it's just Gordon, oh, there's Gordon, sweet. So, before we start, I'm gonna have us do, um, and Judy, I know you're probably the expert on doing these, so forgive me if I clunk my way through it, but I'm gonna have us do a brain break, just to get ourselves focused, and this one is a hand crossing mix-up, and I am personally terrible at this, even though I've been practicing, but, um, I'm gonna describe it to you in words, don't watch me do it, even though, I don't know if you can see it, because I am not good at this, so you're gonna extend your arms out in front of your body. And then you're gonna cross your left hand over your right hand. And you're going to attempt to spin your left hand in circles going clockwise and your left hand in circles going counterclockwise. All right, this one I can do, I don't know how everyone else is feeling about it.
Uncoordinated, but sure.
All right, I can't see your hands because they're up too high, but I believe that you can do it, awesome. All right, the next one is the one that I cannot do. You're going to try bobbing one hand straight up and down and the other one goes to the side at the same time. And I cannot do this.
I'm way better at the, like, patting my head.
Right, me too, and rubbing your tummy. All right, now with the bobbing up and down into the side to side, switch hands. Wait. I think I'm a diagonal thinker, not an up and down or sideways, all right, the last one. One hand is gonna go up and down and the other one is going to go in circles.
I think I got this one.
All right, so technically, we're doing midline crossing of the brain and it's supposed to help us focus, which will be helpful for us to get through these other orange ones. Um, seeing as we agreed to be curious, I'm going to invite you all to be curious by bringing up one of the orange ones so that we can, um, keep time in mind, but also prioritize the, the, the needs and preferences that have gotten an orange color. Before we do that, Michelle, do you wanna bring up your point about the eliminating component?
Yeah, um, I understand that some of them are pink because they're already policy, but one became pink because one person, um.
You can say my name, it's fine.
Yeah, Laurel said, I fully do not support this, and that was acknowledging harm. So I, I would like if that was, um. If, if we had some discussion.
Are we okay bringing that into the discussion, even though we set the parameters at the beginning, is there flexibility here?
Can you, Maya, I'm sorry, I know I was late, but can you just explain to me what the parameters are for the discussion?
The parameters were that if there was, because, because these are agreements that, that to be fully effective require a group consensual, um. Affirmative agreement to, um, it, it was, um, and, and I, I worked on this parameter with a person who, who does this, um, as a professional and who studied this through the 3pm program, that if there's somebody who says that they will not agree to something, that that's not going to be a successful agreement. So the parameter was that if one person, um, unless it was, you know, used as a tool egregiously to eliminate, that if one person does not fully, or does not support, if somebody does, somebody fully does not support, then that is not gonna be a successful agreement and should be eliminated. I understand that that's a frustrating parameter, so that's why I, I heard Michelle feeling frustrated and wanted to open that up.
Yeah, and it wasn't that I, I didn't want to say your name, Laurel, it's just that that was what happened, it was one person and I, I'm not trying to be, you know. I'm not trying to gloss it over in any way.
No, I was just making it easier, so.
No, I mean.
The, so.
It's just not, it's not necessary.
Okay, Maya, I'm happy with however you wanna go, I mean, if you wanna just go through your, however you had it before and I can pipe in on my, as we go to them.
Gordon, do you have something to add?
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm happy to discuss that one, I just think it's important that we stick to the, the fact that if any one of us says, no, I can't agree to that one, then we don't have an agreement because we don't have an agreement and.
I'm just being curious, I would like to know.
I guess I can also say, for that, for the. I'm trying to find the, the. I'm not, thank you. I, I, I would just say for myself. In principle, or most cases, I would say, yeah, this seems like an obvious thing that we should support, but I'm not sure what everybody means by it and, and what people think is harm is different, and I think. there have been some cases where this idea has been. I don't know, leveraged in a certain way, or, or used to try to shut down certain kinds of comments that I didn't think were right, and that kind of makes it tricky, because you said, we have this language, and I think it knows what it means, but then I imagine it being used in a way that is like literally true to the words, but, but in a different, like totally different spirit or purpose. For me, then it gets, that's what the question that I had again about it. And I guess I. Well, yeah, I guess related to that, I also had. Well, I won't say the related, that's all, that's all I gotta say. Judy?
I, I just would ask, I mean, if we're talking about the item, to understand how we would actually implement it, so if I said that comment harmed me, and someone that said to me on the board, then do we go into mediation about it, the two of us? Or the person who said the comment, or does the whole board go into it? I just was, I guess I just need a little more context of how we would actually implement that. Does that seem like?
Sure. I, I feel like this is akin to prioritizing impact over intention. And I think there have been circumstances where individuals did feel that they experienced harm. And rather than working toward repair, the harm was furthered. And attempting to resolve harm simply with, between the same set of people who did not acknowledge the harm, it perpetuates it. And I feel like there continue to be hard feelings, there continue to be tension. That I, I certainly. You know, I, I hope I wasn't a part of any of it, but entering in so late in the year. I can sense it and it's, it's, and it continues.
Gordon?
I, I I appreciate what you just said, Michelle. I mean, to me, I would think, you know, we've said we want to have like in-depth and ongoing equity training by a kind of professional outside person, and to me, this would be something to address there. I just feel like the language is a little too. I don't know, malleable or interpretable or something like that, to try to make it as an agreement. And, and then I guess the mediation thing is out, like in general, I'm thinking, okay, what are these agreements? It's not like we can hold somebody to account and say, hey, you weren't actually listening curiously with an open heart while I was talking. Right? They're just, they're kind of like a group of intentions that we all agree on, but when we say we want to, we want to like actively address something that has actually happened, and, and try to have mediation happen, that's like a much more concrete and less aspirational kind of thing. So it feels to me like it's in a different category.
Yes, I mean, God, I'm gonna, you guys are gonna have to like just start drinking or something, every time I say I see both sides of this thing. Is that, I do think that there needs to be some things of like knowing when you were being harmful, and that can come out of the equity and whatever training, I think, as long as we're getting there sometime this year, because I'm just echo Michelle, like coming in the last, like it's been four months since we joined the board, and y'all all know I live with like chronic illness and things like that, too. There's like actual harm to a certain extent, that's like coming emotionally, mentally, that results in other like bodily stress and function. So I think there's like a certain amount of like, what is that harm? And some of that is coming from like what people are saying, some of it is just being like on the respectful, sometimes it's just being like, you know, just kind of being in very tense situations, which is definitely are. But that is part of the job, so that's not something that I'm saying we're not gonna ever do, but understanding like when and where to a certain extent that harm means, Gordon, I'm with you, we're there on that. I also with the mediation. Like, in theory, also agree with it, but also same thing, it's like, is that an actionable thing? What does that mean? And like, this sounds terrible, but like realistically speaking, I'm kind of like how many more meetings is that mediation going to be? And who's doing the mediation? So I would want to know, like those couple of things, I am very much in favor of the sentiment to this, because I think that just being respectful, it's acknowledging that everybody does come from various backgrounds and has various life experiences that people, even if you think aren't being harmful, can be harmful in multiple ways, so figuring out what that is. But curious as to the, like, who is our mediator?
I think that would be an unknown factor while considering this as a agreement. So. Go ahead, Michelle.
You know. There are, there are no guarantees throughout any of this, and we, there's no black and white either, and. I get a little triggered every time I hear equity lens or equity at this point, because I don't feel like it's being practiced, and it is also aspirational. And I, I feel very strongly that in order to move toward equity that, you know, things like all the biases and power dynamics, they need to be addressed, and I can't tell you specifically who would be mediating, but there are professional mediators who are well-versed and neutral. I mean, we need neutral parties when we're having, I'm not talking about just tension, when we're having conflict.
Gordon, is it okay if I let Laurel go first, since you already had a chance? Laurel?
Um, yeah, so. I will never participate in this. I, it, I because I point out racism doesn't mean I need to participate in people working through that racism. I will not. It's, it's not something I'm ever going to be a part of. And I had harm done pretty much every month all last year and school year, and I had to deal with it. I had to, I had to, it happened in heck, it happened in a retreat even, where my voice was silenced. I, it doesn't work. And also, it's traumatizing for the person who's had to deal with it. To be there while, the amount of trainings I've been in where white people get to process their whiteness and feel bad, and I'm just like, I all know, I know all this, I don't need to be here. And they're just kind of stare at me strangely. I'm not going to be part of something like this. I know we're not just talking about racism, but it will be part of this. And also, what Gordon said, it can absolutely be used against people. You, what you said just now hurt me, and now we have to go into mediation, and I'm like, and that's all subjective. There's no control over this, really. So I can't be, I will not be privy to that. It would be more, I'd be subjecting myself to that, more of that harm, so. Do I wish for the world you're talking about? Yes. Will it happen on this board? I don't think so. I do think where we are right now, we have we have the ability to get a lot of done this year, and I don't think as people. I think this kind of portrays this trope that we're, we were, are broken, because we didn't get along all the time, but we did a lot of stuff. That trope is, is put out in order to undermine a black and brown board. Like, obviously, it's broken now, because you people are here and you want equity, and you want to have other kids seen. They will never say it like that. But that's how it gets put out, so I don't want to give any power to that, because I've seen it used in the opposite way, over and over and over, and I am not going to go into mediation one-on-one with someone because they've been racist towards me. It's not my job.
Gordon, and then Michelle?
Thanks, Maya. I also think it's tricky, because I can imagine, it's, it's easy to imagine situations where I would want to go into mediation, and I wouldn't want to force somebody into mediation, like it's and, but mostly, I feel like and I don't, I will, I'm not saying we should cut off debate at all, but for me, I feel like this is obviously not something we're gonna settle tonight, and I don't know what the with the timeline is, you know, what we're trying to quite get through here, so I just wanted to maybe after, Michelle, after you have your next explanation of things, if we could figure out if this is something we want to keep trying to figure out tonight, or and I'm not trying to like push it aside or anything, but it feels like it's a, it's a specific thing that requires its own discussion, but I don't see that we're gonna get to it tonight.
Michelle?
Yeah, I think this is, this is clearly a longer discussion, because there's some misunderstandings around mediation. Mediation working toward transformation is mutual. And it doesn't mean that the person who has been harmed and the person who or the, the person or people who enacted harm have to sit in the same room and work it all out and, you know, become friends. That's not what it means, and Laurel, you know, I understand that you are a black woman, but there are other people who do understand racism and the nuances of harm. And you're absolutely right. There should be others and mediators who are doing the educating and teaching people so they can be more empathetic and see how their actions and decisions affect others. So I don't need to say anymore, and I'm I, I really encourage that we all spend some time talking about this at another time. Because I, I believe that without repair, transformation is not possible.
I, I appreciate everyone's input. I, I, the only thing I'm gonna say about this before we move on, because I've been putting myself at the end, to make sure everyone else is heard, is that for me, I read this as not, yes, there's always the opportunity for anything to be weaponized, but I didn't read this as like something where somebody would pipe up, they've been harmed. I read this as acknowledging the harm that you just described so poignantly, Laurel, that went on all last year. That's the harm that I was assuming was being mentioned or referenced in this. And, and for me, that acknowledging the harm component, that's, that's the first step towards transformative work, and it's hard to ask everybody else in the district to do that work when we don't take it on ourselves. At the same time, multiple realities, the idea that this might be weaponized is, is very real and very important to keep in mind. But I, I, I do hope that we can revisit this another time, so maybe Rob, if you want to put a star on this one or something for another conversation, but for now, it, it, it looks like it won't be one of our working, I mean, our meeting agreements. And we'll just move on. So, looking at the time, I want to maybe invite us to discuss two of them, and then we can jump into our goals and see what our timeframe looks like at the end to come back. If there's any two, and I'd like to give Kirti priority to bring up, if you have any that you would like to, to hear about why people maybe listed as a question, or if you want to hear more about, since you missed that first part. If you don't, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I should have warned you, it's not fair. If you don't, I'm sure somebody else will demonstrate curiosity, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm happy to just give my couple of cents on these. I'm in agreement with the greens, so there's no, nothing there. I think a couple of these, like we said earlier, really kind of seeing or trying to get the same spirit on it, on some of the orange ones, at least from where I'm reading this. I want to say things like, I, I think this is like a half and half, like the second one on here, respect my time and energy for showing up to meetings, I think. I, where I'm, what I'd like to go with that is, I don't know if there's, I'm reading through these as quick as I can, which is understanding that, like, time is valuable to people. And there are sometimes when like I honestly think debate should be over, or things aren't here, or like, there's just like a lot of like, we're gonna just kind of convince somebody on here. I just mostly, I'm like we've been, I mean, I, I know everyone keeps telling me the last four months aren't indicative of what the whole previous year have been like, but so far, like, I did the math on it, like Michelle and I were averaging thirty hours of meetings the first like four weeks that we were on the board. I understand that's not normal, but like, I would really like to have some respect for just time and meeting some sort of like minimum or maximum time for meetings that we have, and be like, if there's possibility of like tabling some topics of the next time, because it's a lot of work we do here, and there's a lot of issues that come up every single time. And a lot of them require thought and processing time, too. So it's like, even if something is brought up in a meeting, I don't know where that time goes in there. I mean, I don't know if that's becoming expert on every topic. I don't know if that's necessarily, that's where I'm looking at it. I mostly, I'm just like there's a certain amount of info that can go in any one meeting, and at some point, we have to like hit a block on it, like, I mean, I think five hour to six hour to seven hour meetings shouldn't be the norm, and the idea is to have like a school board that we're also many of us working, have kids, doing those things, too, is to like have a good debate on the issues, but then reach some sort of consensus on when we're either coming to an agreement or not, and if we're not, can we move to a different time? So I don't know where that comes in and goes, but the time was when one of them.
Can I just stop you right there? So maybe we could do that one, and, and if that's okay, and we can just answer the, I know somebody else had a question about that. Oh, my internet is unstable. I apologize if I'm wonky. But maybe we could look at, that one is kind of abstract, but then there's one down here that's an agreement about how to possibly address that. Could we lump those two together and talk about this concept of, and honestly, there's another one that's about recognizing that meeting time is a finite resource. It feels like all three of those are linked. Could we talk about those as related, and then we can knock three Post-its out of the way all at once? Is that okay?
I'm good with that.
So I see, I see Laurel, Gordon, and then Judy.
So for I'm just gonna speak on the one that that Kirti was just talking about. I which will probably hit on some of this other stuff I don't understand and gets their share. It's my Which will probably hit on some of this other stuff I don't understand and gets their share. It's my share of cookies. I don't know. Um, I do want my share of cookies. Um. I proposed last year, Kirti, that we had a hard stop at 11 and that we would have to vote as a board. If we wanted to, and a lot of boards do this. It was not agreed upon and I couldn't get it into the agreement. Not, or whatever we're calling it. Anyway, it wasn't this part. It's, it's the working agreements. Um. Honestly. I think this crosses over a lot with working agreements. Um. So what I, if we vote on, if we're doing working agreements, if we vote on that. Then I would, I again propose that we have to vote. And ha- have a actual decision by the majority of the board to keep going. And I think that, I mean, 10:30 or 11 would be fair to, to look at this. Or maybe have a time check at 10:30 to know what we're done at 11 and to, to, you know, kind of. Cause I, I, believe me. I was like, what? When I got here too. And so these marathons, while we're getting a lot done are, it's a lot. It, it is, you're right. When you said it's, it is part of the harm. That happens. And so I, I would propose that. I just don't know where it goes in the system. I don't think it exactly has to do with, it could be a policy that we, like a board policy that we. Get together and write to say. And I think there may be something already written that says, read all materials. The only thing I didn't agree with on the, to go to the other one is. I don't, I, to have all your questions done by Sunday is to me not completely realistic. So. If that has to happen that way, I can try to do that, but I, I, you know, it won't always happen. That's the only thing I had.
Gordon.
Thanks. Um, first of all, I, I don't know, maybe we do this in the working agreements, but I would support the 10:30, 11 thing that. You just said Laurel, and I think it might also be helpful to kind of forcing us to be more efficient as we go through the whole meeting by knowing that we have that limited time. I'm, I'm the person who wrote this thing that is so wordy, you can't fit it in one, like you have to scroll to see from the beginning to the end here and. And my idea is that we could save time in the meetings themselves first by not having staff present to us. The exact same things that we've gotten in writing that at the end of the previous week. So that we all commit to reading that stuff so they can be there to answer questions, but not to. You know, read to us the words on a PowerPoint that we've had in our packet for five days. And the thing about getting in questions early. I, I think that's. Something to aim for, but can't be required, which is why I put the last sentence there that like, no matter what happens, like every board member still has the right to. To ask any question, like maybe somebody's sick or they forgot or they whatever, they didn't read stuff. Like it's just like, this is a thing to aim at, because I think if we can get, to the extent we can get questions in early, it means staff can spend those two days figuring out the answer. And present that to us. And also I know that sometimes on the staff side, they felt like, oh my God, I'm going before like the firing squad of the board and. And what are they going to throw at me? And so if I can throw out this stuff early and people can prepare. That that's good and it would make that part of the meeting shorter, but is not a requirement. Like if you say, okay, I didn't get my questions in. I just thought of it now. I just looked at it now. That's, that's gotta still be fine. We can't cut that off. So this is, this is really something that we would aim at, not that would be required as far as I'm concerned.
Judy and then Kirti.
Um, I think that my comments really, I think Laurel covered a lot of what I was going to say. I think this, that particular item. Really fits and might already be in the working agreements, but if not, I think it should be. Emphasized, expanded or included because it's really about how we prepare for meetings, not how we are in meetings. And um, I hope, I mean, it's also been understood that people, the best I can is get questions in before so staff. Could prepare. So I, I just feel like it's covered in working agreements and isn't really, does not really fit into. How we interact in the, in meetings. So.
Kirti.
Uh, I just had one last thing on the, on Gordon's post-it. Um. My question is, I guess, I mean. There's a certain presentations that are for us and I know we're like live zoomed and this is for also the public. So I guess the question to me is that like. What staff presentations are for us versus also needs to be shared with the community. Cause I mean, that's, I'm, I have no issues with like reading stuff and asking questions beforehand and have some pop up on there too. But I think there's a. There's a dual purpose to some of the presentations that happen and it's a matter of, I think, like figuring out, right? Cause it's like, there's also we're communicating to our. Our community, what's like, um, what we're looking at and what we're making decisions on. So I, I do think that we should have. And I, I don't know if those can be decided previously or whatever, but I, I don't want to like. I hate putting people on the spot, especially if they are, are anxious and having those kinds of like. Presentations. On the other hand, I do recognize there's a, there's a need. For people who aren't at the meeting to see what we're seeing and not everybody in the community is going to read a board packet, right? They're gonna. Look at this too. So understanding like what those presentations are for, I am perfectly happy with like putting in questions beforehand and like. You know, and obviously things are going to pop up on there. Um, I just didn't want to like blanketly. Also make that a rule because we, we under understand what the purpose of the, the presentations are actually there for. And I just said that three times. So I'm going to stop now.
Gordon, can I just say something really fast before you jump back in? For me, I didn't write the respect for my time one, but I did write the one about recognizing time as a finite resource and. For me, I see all of this linked. I'm beyond happy and 11 to me is, is too late already. I, I would like our meetings to be a lot shorter. And I've been really happy that the first two were two hours and one and a half. And I think that we can. Work towards that. And I think the main part of that is, is in the spirit of that whoever wrote the respect for my time. And that's um, that's the part with like showing up to meetings prepared. Whether it's meeting that deadline of the one Gordon wrote of Sunday night, that's completely different. It's just coming, coming, having read and, and there's been a few times when, when it's clear that. A lot of the time is eaten up because. Of a lack of preparation. And I think that it's important that we all commit to that. So. Whether it was written in a way that conveys that, that was what I read in that was just in order to save time. Because if we have a cutoff of 11 and we still spend two hours on one topic. We're just going to have to carry over that work. It's not work that's going to go away. It's just work that's going to have to come the next time. So that's, that's my concern with only going the route of setting a stop time. I'd like the stop time, but I'd also like us to be cognizant of how much time we use on each. Agenda item itself. But we all have to agree. So that's where it lands. Gordon.
On that, I guess I, I, I think having this, whatever the stop time is, I think that's a rule that we can make. And I like. The thing that Laurel and Kirti said about then we would have to vote to extend that. But um, on the other items, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't see that we could say, okay, there's only going to be half an hour of discussion of this. Like we could say. We've allocated half an hour and then do we want to vote to have more? But mostly I think if we have a hard cutoff of 10:30 or 11 or whatever it is. Then it will force us to say, okay, now we've spent 45 minutes talking about blah, blah, blah. Is this really how we want to spend the rest of our time? I, I also wanted to address the thing that you raised, Kirti, which is the presentations that are to serve the public as well as. The board members. And I don't know if this can be answered now, but I wanted to ask. From Andy and Rob's side, if there are presentations like that, like that have been given to the board in our packet. But the public only gets for the first time, you know, it's getting for the first time at the meeting and I agree, people are, most people are not going to read the packet. Could the staff person who's, would be doing that presentation? Pre-record something that goes up on the board's website. That's like a split screen with, here's the slide and here's the talking head. And so whatever that is, a 10 minute thing, a 15 minute thing, the thing that they would do in our meeting. So that they could put that online and any members of the public who want to access it could access it, but we wouldn't have to take 15 minutes in our meeting of. Of having somebody read through things that all of us got the previous Friday and hopefully had read before the meeting. That was, that's my hope.
Laurel, and then I think we should move on to goals.
I just wanted to say I liked that, but I liked, I like it that if it was part of our board packet. I think that would save us a ton of time because then it really would generate the questions in their presentation and then we could be ready. At the time at the meeting to, we'd just be ahead. Oh, I like that, Gordon.
And not to put you on the spot, Andy, but I believe we talked about that maybe at the last leadership meeting and you, you had indicated, or maybe it was Rob also. Support for these types of videos and they'd be easy to link into the packet. Is that right? Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, I, I could be in support of that. I think it might initially be clumsy, uh, for lack of a better word until we get. As a system, more accustomed to preparing more descriptive information and recording a presentation prior to a board meeting. Depending on the nature of the presentation, it may, you know, be fairly complex and I, I. Would ask for grace in the event that we were not. As comprehensive in our recording initially as we would be ultimately, but I, I think that that's definitely something that we as an organization can work towards.
So just looking at the time, um, it looks like for now we have four agreements that we can all. Commit to having a way for board members to escape the meeting space quickly and privately. And we'll be hearing about that plan shortly. Um, I think that analysis and, and suggestions are being brought to the board. From a safety firm. Board use of the equity lens, identify a process to use it regularly. And timely transparent communication, especially from leadership and be curious. Are all the ones that we agreed upon. Um, and, and hopefully at the end, if we have time, we'll come back and, and talk about some more of these. Orange ones, but it sounds like for now the three about time. They look like they're red or pink. Is that right? Are, are we having people who are not wanting to commit to? Being prepared in order to conserve time? Judy, I see you have a question and then I'd like to know if we can make those red and move on or are they still in limbo and we still need to discuss them more?
Were you calling on me Maya? Are you waiting for?
Oh no, I, I call on you. Yes.
Great. Um, I, I see. So the item, for example, about safety, I'm totally on board. I voted a one for it. But it's a task that we already agreed to do and we are going to have a plan, right? It's not really an agreement. For the media, how we're going to be in meetings. So I don't know. I mean, we're going to hear a report. We're going to have a plan of how to get out of the room. So. My question is, does it fit on this? And then what I heard was agreement that people wanted to respect, be respectful of time. To be prepared to do all those things, but it was more about, is that a working agreement that we do before a meeting or part of our, what we do in the meeting? So that's what. I'm having a little confusion with what goes where.
Wasn't how to be in meetings safely was part of the question?
And so you can participate fully.
Yeah.
No, I, I think it should, I'm just saying it's going to be done and do we then keep it on a list we review each time? That's all.
Right. For me, they're about how we are in meetings. If we don't prepare and come to the meetings. With the intention of sharing space and, and being ready to roll. That impacts how we relate to one another because it impacts our timeline and I don't think anybody. Participates fully when it gets to be 11:30 and there's still four more things on the agenda.
I'm not at all arguing the intent, completely agree Maya. I, and, and I think we're addressing that. That's all. So. We can leave it up. It was a question.
Okay. I, I was getting the impression that people did not want to commit to it, but um. I'm also seeing some of them turning green and I'm not sure maybe Rob's reading it differently than me, but Gordon, Laurel and then Kirti, but first Rob.
Yeah, I, I just got the impression that the, the idea about time was something that. We agree should be green and we, we can wordsmith it and get into, into one statement, but, but having. But that was the impression I got from this discussion.
Can we do a quick check-in about the idea of taking the discussion we just had about time and asking. Jenna to, to turn it into something that incorporates all of our input, but doesn't. Add anything that nobody agreed to and doesn't exclude anything that other people were hoping for. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Are we okay giving it to Jenna to work on or do we need to keep talking about this? It's okay to say thumbs down if you're not ready to move on.
I'm not putting my thumb up or down. I would like to keep talking.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, is it Gordon, is it okay if I pass it on to Laurel? Good. Laurel.
Um. There are three different things here that are kind of, they're not all. Maybe whoever wrote this has a very certain idea of what they're all about. I still have no idea what everyone gets their share means. No idea, zero. So we haven't really had the discussion and to just say, it's fine, let's go, is, is concerning to me. And so, um. Does that mean I'm like, kill it? No. So I, I just am concerned about kind of rushing a little bit because as you said, agreements. Need to be agreed on and we need to understand it. And so when we put it all together, which they're not necessarily all together. And we don't understand it, I, I. It, yeah, I, 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 I'm not in accord with understanding everything that is happening right now and just saying it's fine. Let somebody else figure it out because. Then I will be in the position of being and going, nope, I don't agree with that. Or maybe I will, but I don't, I don't fully understand it right now.
Gordon and Kirti.
Thanks. What I heard was a general agreement that we should prepare for the meetings in order to, to. To try to make them not drag on so long and, but without any specifics, like I don't think people. Agreed to the specific Sunday night thing that I had necessarily, but so if we're going to give it to somebody, I thought it was something like that and. And that also we don't have, we wouldn't have to answer the question of what everybody having their shares. I, I, what I heard agreeing to was just. That we should all prepare in order to make the meetings. Go, go more efficiently. The one thing that I do think we is really concrete that would be good to vote on, and maybe we do this when we get to the working agreements is the idea of. Having a hard timeline that we then have to vote to go past. That's not up here, but I think that's a thing that's not just aspirational that I think would be really good to have. And then on the question of whether things are agreements in the meetings or working agreements, if people are willing, I, I guess I would like to ask to leave it to. Leadership to figure out what goes on what list. I, I honestly don't care if there are things were agreed on. I don't. I don't really care what list they're on, but I would hope that we don't have to spend a lot of time among the seven of us figuring that particular thing out. Thanks.
I didn't mean to leave that question unanswered Laurel, but I can explain what I mean. Historically, different groups of people have been. Excluded from sharing their voices as fully as other people. And I want to make sure that those. Groups of people don't have a. Folks from dominant culture dominate space. And to me, that feels important to protect. So that's where that comes from. It's. About protecting space. Kirti and then Judy.
Um, so Gordon, I agree with what things you just said about the separation of what I heard.
Um, so Gordon, I agree with the things you just said about the separation of what I heard. You also heard that respect the time, be prepared. And I would fully support putting finite times on these things with the vote portion that Laurel put in, out of here. My head a question slash addendum to the, having the way for the board members to escape the meeting space quickly and privately. I think that's for in-person things too. But I think there needs to be a recognition of the need for board members to escape, even if it is a virtual meeting also, like, so I think there's needs, I mean, like there's, I don't know, that felt like it was missing in there. I mean, we, I think we can all have a way, but like also being respectful that people may have been need for whatever. And I think that comes a little bit back to the, the harm component of it that Michelle maybe originally brought up to. But I think there's been certain conversations that come up that are like actively, um, one of y'all used the words triggering on some of these things. And like, I don't want to be in a situation where I'm causing somebody to be feeling those or actively triggering a situation. So I think understanding, um, that, I mean, that's, this is the action. It's having the way. But like, I think are like, foregoing the knowledge skills and that, you know, attitudes kind of thing, like recognizing that there may be need for people to escape or leave. Um, and that's my two cents on this.
Judy?
It's a quick comment that I feel in some ways I don't, I don't want to make the assumption that we, our meetings have gone long because people aren't prepared. I really believe both my experiences, but most board members have read their package and are prepared. And I believe everyone takes that responsibility seriously. Um, so I don't, I, just by saying we'll be prepared will not mean we'll shorten the meeting. So I still think we need, if we are serious about shortening meetings, doing time things, voting on going further. I just don't think that one thing will fix it. That's all.
Okay, I, oh, Judy again. Um, so it still sounds like these aren't turning into green and maybe not turning into red that we need to think about them in a different way or maybe in a different context. Maybe Rob can pick a different color for the ones that we've discussed, but that are not green or red. I know we're adding a whole new color into it, but I think we can handle it at this point. Maybe blue just means like talked about, but not decided on. And in, on that note, I don't want to spend four hours talking about these unless people feel incredibly attached to talking about them more. I think it would be great to jump into a different topic, partly so that our brains can have a shift in gears. Um, and if there's time at the end, we can come back to these. And if not, then we can schedule more time together to discuss these or not. But as of now, we have these four and, um, that's better than zero. So we're four ahead of the game. Is everybody okay moving on? Yeah. All right. And without objection, we get to jump into the goals. Um, so here are the goals that everybody sent in. I want to just walk you through how they are listed. The yellow tier up on top is everybody's first priority as they listed them in their emails. The second tier is everybody's second priority. Blue is everybody's third priority. And then there were a few extras added in as well. So that's the orange on the bottom. We don't need to read these out loud. I think everybody can handle reading them themselves. Maybe we give each other, does it feel fair to take 10 minutes to read them? And then we can come back and, um, we have a proposal about how to handle these. As you will notice, there are some that are, um, very much in line with one another or essentially repeats of one another. It was my intention and it was an agreement with Gordon. And I think I've supported this as well, that nobody's goals be eliminated just because it seemed to us like they repeated each other. There might be something in these as we see from our last discussion. There's a lot of nuances that aren't necessarily in the words as they're presented. So everybody's is listed, everybody's is included. If they feel redundant, that will be addressed in the next step. So feel free to turn your screens off if you want. I'll leave the screen shared. And it's 5:58, but probably almost 5:59. Let's take 10 minutes. Judy, I see your hand up.
I just wanted to ask for, um, if there is a list, um, I think I was concerned in your email. I read you say, please don't write things down that we're going to definitely do this year. That we've, you know, so for example, you gave the North Plan. And so, uh, some, some, there were a couple of things I didn't write down because my assumptions, we were, we already were on that path and doing it. Which we won. So is there sort of a brief list of what those are? Because for example, I put implementing the equity lens is something we committed to last year. And I didn't add it, you know, with fidelity, but maybe, maybe I was wrong.
Right. To me, what I tried to emphasize were that certain things are required of us. So we have to pass a balanced budget. We have to, uh, evaluate our superintendent. The situation at North requires a decision to be made. That, that doesn't, that cannot sit in limbo. So those are the examples of things that are required of us. Because we committed to something last year and didn't do it, I'm not sure that we need to discuss. Does that mean that they automatically get priority as a goal for this year? Or do we have to re-up them as goals? In terms of the equity lens, we just agreed in the past conversation that our meetings will include that. Um, and I think that opens the door. So you want to add new goals that you don't, that you didn't, or if you want to trade one out, feel free to do that. I also think that when we have the next step happen and, uh, you see the proposal that maybe something like the equity lens will find its place in the proposal. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
It does. So, but for youth voice was another one, but we have a committee already working on that. So, but that would be one you would say we should include then?
Well, we have a committee working on it, but it doesn't necessarily have to happen. We could talk in circles for the next 10 years and never do anything with it. So I think it qualifies as a, as a goal. Personally, but if, if it feels like it's a requirement, I'm talking about the things that are, um, non-negotiable. Last year, we included, um, things that we absolutely didn't have a choice. We had to hire a superintendent, but we listed that as a goal. Laurel?
Well, I had two very different things. One is addressing what you guys are talking about. We have different leadership this year, so I'd like to hear what, and for some of these things, if there are already plans in the making that are pretty set and moving forward and have clear agendas that we don't need to insert ourselves into anymore. Or, yeah, I'm not saying to remove, like we're messing it up or anything. But if it's not necessary, maybe we can focus on other things because we know that the work is getting done. I think what happened last year is the work wasn't getting done. And that's still a concern, um, in the sense that that's what we were dealing with. Um, my other thing is like for my removal of OSBA one, it, it, it has been toned down a lot. It's still, I like how they wrote it, but it's still been toned down. The, the, the racial oppression I was dealing with, if they, if that could be racial oppression instead of just oppression. Uh, they absolutely answered all white board members' questions and district, white district staff's questions and never answered any of mine ever and made a concentrated. I'll go into it later, but I just want it to be what it is, not like, oh, it's just, we should just leave.
I, I understand. And that's why I emphasized that because of the way that this jam board works, there was only so much. So those are cut and pasted. Everything is cut and pasted from people's emails. So I cut and pasted the, the part that emphasized the main point as I saw it with the hopes, as I mentioned in my email, that people would flesh them out and or let Gordon and I know if you wanted us to do it. So I appreciate that. To the first point, I think that you'll find that the, um, question of hearing back from admin on what is already being worked on and also what might not even be possible is included in the proposal that we're going to put forward. But please, if it's not addressed, definitely bring it back up in case I don't track it. So I see we are just missing Judy. I do want to be able to give you guys like a break to catch a bite. Oh, there's Judy. Okay. Well, then we're all back. Um, so I, I want to present to you the idea that we had for how to deal with these agreements. Instead of treating them like an elimination game, I, I was inspired by Andy's three rocks. And the idea that when you look at all of these, they all fall under four categories. So, and, and honestly, a couple of them fall under multiple categories, which also shows that these categories that can be considered, um, whether you consider them goals or priorities or values. They're all symbiotic and they all feed each other. And I just want to show us how much agreement we have. So that's why I really like that this is all color coordinated. But, um, so if you look at this, what you see is that every single thing that we listed, everything that everyone listed falls under these four categories. Um, and then I didn't do all of them, but I started to link and draw lines between different things. So, um, renaming special education and modernize our special education systems, et cetera. That falls under innovation, but it also falls under equity. And frankly, it also falls under wellness and belonging, et cetera. So what I wanted us to do is consider a proposal where, um, unless somebody is absolutely concerned that one of these things suggested is harmful, what I would like us to consider doing is having these reviewed by our communications person. And please tell me what you think, because this is something that has only been bounced off of Rob and Gordon and myself. But having our communications person recognize when some things overlap or are collapsible in terms of categories. For example, there's quite a few that reference, um, improving outcomes for students with disabilities. For example, feels directly linked to the one I just mentioned about special education and modernizing our system, which then feels connected to, um, um, there's one, here we go, effective inclusion, learning for all. So these things are all interconnected. I would love to have them cleaned up. And I didn't want to do that because cleaning them up would have meant eliminating your voices. And then revisiting them at a future date after Andy has a chance to look at them and say, already doing that. For example, it's my understanding that we are referring to our special education program in a different way than have, than we have in the past. So some of these things I know are already started. The, there's student voice included here, things like that. And then I also would like to hear from Andy, what is not possible for us to do this year? Um, and what we need to, what we need to understand about our, um, capabilities. It's, it's unreasonable and, and frankly, demoralizing to create goals that we will never be able to achieve. And then we would like to propose a work session before our first meeting in October. So that would give staff enough time to do those two steps where we come back here. What, which of these things are already in the works, which of these things aren't possible? And then as a group, we prioritize these. So that's what I would like you all to consider. I would like us to think about not eliminating any of them tonight, but rather coming back to them after we've had a chance to sit on them and think deeply and get the feedback that we need from the district in a timely manner. Um, I'd also like to point out that three of the categories, wellness and belonging. I think Andy worded it as safety and wellness. Equity and engagement are the three rocks that Andy has listed. Innovation, I don't think, I think innovation is connected and I believe it's strongly supported by Andy. But, um, this tells me that the other thing that we have setting, the other thing we're setting up ourselves for success with is that we wanted a superintendent that we could be collaborative with. And these three categories or four categories, we have four, he has three, are all complementary, if not overlapping. And that to me feels like it moves us in the direction where, um, a lot of positive work can be taken care of. Laurel?
Um, I feel like my voice is being removed in this process. I, I, there are things I thought we were coming together and would talk about the stuff that we were bringing forward. But to take it to somebody I don't know, is this person a person of color who is going to be cleaning up my words? Is it? I don't know. This, I don't know this communication person. She's brand new. And my experience with communication so far has been horrifying. So I, I feel like the, what, I appreciate wanting to make things go faster and, but I also think part of the, the process is by definition messy. I, I, we are Andy's boss. We have board goals. Andy doesn't define our board goals. Andy makes his own goals. I, I don't want that my, the goals that we are looking at to be taken through so many lenses and then come back to us. It's as if we, as a board, are letting other people do our work. And I, 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 I don't agree with this process as it has been presented. It, it frankly concerns me.
I, I honestly appreciate that because I was worried that the feedback would be that this was going to take longer. So that's good to hear that it feels faster, but I also appreciate that you do not want to do this. And that, um, puts us in a place where we can rethink how we do this. Michelle and Kirti?
I feel like, um, since we did this individually without discussion amongst ourselves, there are, um, areas where we did overlap. I want to be able to collaborate with, um, 4J staff. No, I don't have a relationship with a communications person, but that is that person's role to take what we have contributed and hopefully present it in a way that's, um, that's cleaner, that we can, and it's not stopping us from discussing anything. We're still going to, um, have discussions and we are the ones who will be making decisions. And I want to be able to collaborate with, um, administration. I, I don't see why, um, we can't have more input. I think more input is better than just talking amongst ourselves.
Thanks, Michelle. Kirti and then Alicia?
I don't mind the cleanup, but I would like to like not have my words reduced to a post-it. Like honestly, like, I mean, like, I think some of these things are broad and could be more nuanced and. broad and could be more nuanced and like, I mean, just saying something that I said something, somebody may be understanding it a different way. So I'd rather like, even if it's just like two seconds to go through each of these, I would like to hear it from our board members, like honestly, what their thoughts are behind these, because I don't think it's fair to even ask a communications person who doesn't know what our clear thoughts are behind these and try to lump them all together. Um, that's not doing our job and communicating our things. Like, I don't want to be reduced to a, a one liner post-it, but I also don't want to take three hours on each of these. So um, there's that fine line in there. Um, I just thought if we could just do a quick explanation on what we were thinking, that would maybe helpful for all of us to see where we are. And then, then I'm not opposed to a, a lumping together or some other metric by which to like view this lens, but I, I don't think it should happen necessarily entirely just with this posted.
Thank you. Alicia, Gordon and then Judy?
All right. Hey, thanks, Maya. And, um, I, it's funny that you have this little chart because I was starting one myself. But I, I wanna call out something Laurel said that really struck me as true as well. Um, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Laurel, so I'm gonna say what I think I heard you say and, or I can just say this is what I've got to say. Um, I think it's important that we check and make sure what's doable, but I think that comes at the end. Uh, that doesn't, uh, because it sounded like in the process, and I could be wrong, Maya, but it sounds like uh, we're giving the superintendent and his staff a, um, a number, what is it? A number four. And they can just mix it like, oh, we, we can't do that. So I just want to be really clear because I, I, I see you shaking your head. So, but I'll just continue with my rant here. No, just that I think it's really important that we do check in on that. It's just where in the process we check in. And so, um, I heard Laurel call that out and I, I really appreciated that. And I, I was gonna call it out as well that, um, yes, it's good to check in, but where in the process, I would want to have a discussion as a board um, for that. So there's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Gordon?
Um, I, so first of all, I also would like to do what Kirti, um, suggested, like just briefly, the, the people who wrote things can just say, this is what I meant. And then, um, I also agree and won't put words in anybody's mouth with what I think Alicia and, and Laurel were saying, and I, but I think was the idea anyway, if I understand it right, but what I think would make sense is I want to get input from, um, from Andy and, and, uh, other people in the district about what they think is realistic or kind of like if we have like a bunch of things that we think are important and we want to do for me, and somebody says, okay, well, these three are already half done and would be easier to get done, or this is already getting done, so you don't need to put energy into it. That would be important information for me to have, but I completely think it's ultimately the board's decision. We have decided things in the past that were in different, going against what central district leadership wanted to do. We'll have money from, at least money from the, um, Student Investment Act to decide how we want to spend it. So I think that input is, is really critical, but agree that wherever it comes, even if it comes early in the process, it's ultimately the board has to decide what are the goals that we want to do. And, and maybe there are things we put enough resources in to make things feasible that aren't, that aren't already, um, moving in that direction. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. Judy?
Um, I'm not gonna repeat what's been said. I just have another thought because I also felt like, wait a minute, where's, uh, some loss of voice, some, like, do people really know what each other are thinking or trying to say? And I think that's really important to really get some depth because as sort of, um, elegant as it seems or as, um, appealing to have these sort of big categories that we could all say, I still don't know what we're really doing and trying to accomplish. And for example, the special education one was one that I wrote and, uh, and one of them, I mean, there were several. But, you know, it's more to me than just changing the name or changing, uh, you know, I just, I, and I want to see that we make progress and where are we starting? What is our goal for this year that we want to see happen? And not just generally, I think we all want to see general improvement. So, but what, what is it that we're really gonna focus on and do this year? Because honestly, it's sort of overwhelming when I think of the big categories. That's even more goals and more to take on. And I don't even, it feels overwhelming about where to start and what we're really gonna focus on.
So should we, do we agree to jump, oh, I'm sorry, Laurel, and then let's maybe jump into Kirti's proposal of looking at each one?
Alicia's next with that, no?
Sorry, I, 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 I am used to Alicia keeping it on, so I kind of took it for granted because I didn't see it turn on, on.
Um, my, um, so I had heard, you know, about OSBA that people are already deciding that, oh, no, it's not something we can do this year. So what I understand about board goals is that this is something that we all agree on that will, how will we, we will be directing staff and, well, superintendent and superintendent will be directing staff, um, that are paramount. It's like, and so when, and also when I wrote this, I didn't know that this, it was just gonna be like, hey, we're gonna send your one sentence that you wrote thinking that you're going to get to talk a lot more because that was the system last year. And that's gonna go off because this is not how I would write it. So like my intent isn't renaming sped. That's not my intent. My intent is to remove the separation of special education as a separate school and have it completely fully integrated. And that we have policy and structure behind that to support that and understand the funding and what that means completely. So that's hard to write on a post-it and it's hard to write in one sentence. And so my, so when you say these, when we put these like this, I would like it to be that we understand and I hear you saying we can say our quick little things. But also we can say our things, but also I don't expect it to be just shipped off, then we decide what's next. I, I, and then they, because what I, what I heard was it would go to somebody I don't know to, 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 to change it, which in my experience, never works out well. And then it would go to the, the school and the district to decide if it's possible. And then it would come back to us and we would basically be the last in line for our voice and what we're trying to propose, when it should be, we should be first and saying, no, this is important and we need this to happen. And we have decided upon it. So, um, would you like me to start talking about it or would somebody else want to go about theirs? I don't know.
Sounded like Kirti was suggesting and several people backed her proposal up that we go through each one, one by one. So I think maybe that would be the easiest. Um, I've only done this once before and we definitely did not create goals that everybody agreed with. We ended up going with majority rules. So we can do that this time as well, if we prefer to go with majority rules and come up with more narrowed down goals. I am perfectly fine with that. I was trying to make sure that everybody's input would be included, but I am absolutely not attached to this and we can move away from that proposal and start going through them. Um, is it okay with everybody if we go left to right? Unless somebody has an objection with that? Okay, so as you see your thing come up, please read it. And as I mentioned in my email, the problem with Jamboard is that it doesn't have space for folks who had a lot to say. And some people had very quick things to say and some people had a lot to say. And so it was my hope, and I tried to make that clear, that you would share the full intention, but everybody's words have been cut and pasted. I did not manipulate anybody's words. I tried to get your words on the screen to get the goal communicated um, and to have that conversation started. So I will leave it to whoever they are because I didn't memorize everybody's. So please speak up when you see yours.
Okay, the first one is mine. And I tried to express, uh, so I just feel like it would be important for, I want the district to really have a very consistent policy procedures for parent engagement, but it's more than just information exchange, it's parent involvement. I think it really will have, will in the long run, first of all, be important for communication, hearing more voices, but also for student outcomes. And there's an education component to this. It's not just parents coming in and volunteering in the classroom, but how do they support their kids for good educational outcomes? So it was, it was meant to be broad and really be a value and backed up with policy and resources for the district. Happy to answer any questions, but.
Do, do you see this as the only thing that I, was my concern with this and otherwise, I appreciate you explaining it more because it helped me a lot. Um, is when parent engagement, it usually goes to the parents that have the most means and ability to engage. And so I think there's another one on here that kind of coincides with equitable engagement. And like, I, I think both of these are really important. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Laurel, because the intent to me is every parent and equitable, I mean, whatever we, it would take, because um, I think it's one of the missing ingredients in our school and in education that will really help move student success. So yes, I agree, they go together and that's what I was thinking. So thank you.
So I guess I'll speak up also for me, if we're gonna talk details, I, I would maybe prefer to use a different term than parent. Not all students live with parents and, and it's important to be as inclusive as possible. So as long as we're going into details, that's, that's the one reaction I had to this one.
Thank you. I thought, thought long and hard of what term to use. So if there's a more inclusive term, that'd be great.
Maybe caregivers?
Okay, sure. It could be both, parent, caregiver, grandparents, we can be inclusive.
And honestly, not every.
A parent is assumed to be whoever's taking care of the kid, but I can see how that doesn't translate, so.
So, not to rush this along, I should have asked if everybody is done with this one. Are there any more questions or comments?
Can we make a line to the other one? That is on here, or is there more than one? I know there was another one.
When we get to the second, when we get to the second connected one, can I connect it back? So I don't have to search for it right away?
Oh, that's an idea.
What? Oh, sorry, Gordon?
It's like a live memory game.
Oh. Wait, what? I'm sorry, I missed that. Right in?
You know, I would just, I would be interested in, in parent caretaker, community engagement around specific issues. Like in my experience in the past, when we've said, like the last time we did Student Investment Act, we said, we want to hear from the community what people really want. And people really want everything and they're correct to want, want everything, but that's not really helpful. And I don't want to waste time doing that. I want to know like if we have, uh, if we have something that's like, you know, a task force on special education or on mental health, then let's get community members together with administrators and, and teachers and whoever and say, we want engagement on this. Like, we want your input to help us be smart about what's the best thing we could do about this. So I, so for me, I would like to see this kind of engagement focused around things where we're trying to actually make something better. And I'm wary of spending a lot of time and energy on engagement in general.
So Gordon, can I just respond to that? That was not at all the intent of this item. It's not about input on ideas or things. It's really about parents' engagement with their own child, their child to help with their learning and outcomes. And, and the school supporting with education and support. So it's not about community getting their ideas and, and not opposed to that, that would be a different item.
You're saying just the, the district creating more resources to help parents be engaged with their own kids?
More opportunities, more, um, whether their trainings about, um, I think some of the suicide prevention, some of the, that we did. So parents actually know how they can actually be supportive and helpful to their kids at home.
Yeah, okay. Hi, thanks.
Laurel?
I think I was gonna say, did I misunderstood? Yeah, so I think, um, I, I got what you were saying, Judy, and I, I think it's valuable what you said, Gordon. Also, I mean, parent caregiver engagement is, is going to come at different levels and us having a, uh, creating a policy around that of what the board has expectations around this, I think is, is, is important. And also then we're looking at budgeting and funding because if we're creating training, then that, so it could be on very, various levels. And I would imagine the other one that's on here is also, I think, on various levels as well. So, um, I, I kind of like that you, you, you changed the lens for me a little bit because I do see it's we want clear, meaningful connection, which we, we are encouraging that already in some ways, but also creating spaces where parents can, uh, you know, actually do have access to, to, I have always heard that parents want to do these kind of things, but you know, there's no childcare, there's no, all kinds of ways that limit this. So creating these spaces, I think they would get utilized.
Kirti?
Um, I'm gonna screw with your system right here, but since I had the second one on parental involvement, I figured I may as well just add it to here and we can move it when we get to that. So as not to, uh, not to change the topic necessarily. Um, mine was the same kind of thing, which is I'm looking for ways outside of like just your regular PTA, which does involve a lot of people who aren't able to give and participate. And it's a lot of, uh, um, things like, you know, me, case in point, parent really wanted to be involved and I, we got appointed to a school board, like, you know, there's, there's, there's medium grounds in there, which is like all or nothing. And how do we educate parents in wherever they are and like knowing that they have different lives and different responsibilities and things and aren't able to have the same access that we all do? Um, what are some kinds of like resources that we can put forward to get them to have an understanding of what's happening in the schools with their children and then also ways to be able to garner that input in a way that is meaningful to some of the other work that we're doing? Um, I think that, um, I think Judy, you said there's like sort of a missing link on that. And I don't think it's a, I mean, I think it's because the resources are so inequitable that this is the missing link and that parents who need it don't have time and don't have their caregivers on that, on there. So how do we just make ourselves and the schools and the things happening more accessible to the parents, whether it's going out into the community, finding whether resources to be able to like deliver information, other methods to be able to do that. But I feel like this, this, this needs to happen in a way that involves parents um, and gives them some options that are like short of like, hey, I can join a big fundraising arm. Or like I can, you know, run for a school board position. Like, I feel like there's a, there's, there are different ways that you can have meaningful input. Um, and education about what is happening in the education system. So that's where I was on that. So, um, if you want to link it, I think we're kind of like roughly on the same, uh, um, vein on terms of thinking.
I will link it.
If, maybe I could give one other really quick example that would exist, that would, so if you look at the data, for example, in kids coming to school late or absenteeism, we see it being the, the worst sometimes for the kids in the youngest years. I believe some parents don't really even know how to maybe organize to get their kid there on time or really understand the importance of being present. Some probably do, but I mean, there's a lot of supports and basic kinds of information and helping, helping kids and the whole family be more successful. And that's a really simplistic example, but it could go as to many different places here, but acknowledging that every child's situation and family situation is really different. We can help them be, all be successful.
Kirti, are you still wanting to talk again? Or are you done? Michelle?
Um, and then that becomes an equity issue. Now, so there are a lot of overlaps here and, um, when you talk about this parent engagement, um, when you talk about this parent engagement, the teachers would be taking on this role. I think it's, you know, I, I, I wrote creating opportunities for student voice, which sounds like a very simple statement. And I understand that it's not so simple to implement. And we have to find ways to, we have to lower barriers. There are, there are reasons why there are parents and students who have a lot to say are not engaging. We have to be aware of that and make it simple for them.
Yeah, I agree with all of that. I didn't raise my hand, but I agree with all of those things. The one thing I did want to say is that the first thing you said is that the teachers would be taking this on. And there's no way that I said that the teachers are going to be taking it on. That's, it's, we have to figure out as a district how we can do this. And it can be coming from different ways and methods, but I am in, in no means advocating for additional pressures and responsibilities placed directly on the teachers. It may be one avenue. It may not be if what you come up with, but that's not necessarily where I was going with it.
I was not either in mine. So we're on the same page. So, yeah.
Are we ready to move on to the next one? Is there anything else you want to say about this one, Michelle? Or does anybody have any questions or input on this one?
Definitely agree. That needs to happen.
Yeah. I mean, I, I kind of think that we'll probably all agree that all of these things need to happen, which was my original point, but it's also good to have a clear understanding for sure. So if we're all clear on creating opportunities for student voice, last call. All right. Let the person who put this one up expand, explain, open themselves up to questions, clarifications.
It's so funny. I think this is mine. But I was ready for my pink one and I wasn't really thinking about my blue one. So I think it's, I don't know, to me, it seems pretty transparent, if you will, about what we need to do. We've talked about it as a board for a number of years and we've come up with some ideas and I just felt like I needed to put it out for discussion. I don't know how we do it. That's not the point. The point is we do need to do it. But again, it was number two for me. So I wasn't even expecting it to make the top 10. All right. Thanks.
Does anybody have questions or clarifications or comments, votes of support, protests? I see a thumbs up from Michelle. That's very concise.
How about on, how come you say protests on my Maya?
I, just kidding. Honestly, this was my top goal last year. So I don't know why I added, I was ready to go to that.
I appreciate that. That was funny. All right. I see little signs, bad communication. We want bad communication.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if nobody has anything else to say. So any questions or does the person who wrote this want to expand or clarify? Are there any protests? Are there any agreements?
This was mine. So I was really happy to a certain extent with the equity lens and the stuff that the board prior to us has also been putting in. And prior to me, Michelle, that was on there. I was not shocked by the climate survey that came out at the end of the year, but it was really disturbing to me and really depressing in a way that, looking at the number of students, particularly marginalized communities, like just really feeling like they don't belong and the gaps that came from that. And so I think that we've been all focused on equity goals and what those are. And like, we're putting together the programs in place. But I don't know what this looks like necessarily, either in terms of actions on here, but I do would like to like really lessen that gap. Like, I mean, it's all connected to the mental health. It's connected to the emotional safety. It's connected to just being an engaged learner. At the very least of it is just that sense of belonging or that you're accepted. They are. And so even though we've got so many really good programs happening, and I just feel like there's still a gap between what we are doing and what is being reflected and how the students are responding to it. So how would we bridge that gap? I don't know yet, but I would like to really think about that, knowing that, I mean, we are only as good as we are, as we can all belong together in a place that makes us feel safe. So that's my explanation on this one.
Does anybody have questions or et cetera? I'm gonna leave it like that. Laurel?
I see, based on what you said, Kirti, so tell me if I messed this up. But my, the one I put out, my blood sugar is falling and I can't see through the things. Um, I just thought of it. The equity goals. Um, sorry, my brain stopped. I can't see the thing. So let me look at, I took a picture of them. Um. Oh, it was the, um, the one about expulsions that I had put out. So my idea around that was actually, it really had to do with, similar to what you're talking about, like the numbers that we have are not good. And we had one expulsion last year that came to the board for, you can appeal an expulsion. But most people do not. And I think it's because of where people are at. It's kind of a hopeless spot, right? Like what gets you to that point anyway? And you're not going to be like, yeah, let me stay here and still be tortured. So really looking at what that means. So I think that goes along with what you're saying and, and it has to do with review and confirm the equity goals. And, and when, and when I look at board goals, I look at policies that we can put in place that are basically when we write policy and I'll agree on it, it's a law, for all intents and purposes, that has to happen. What I learned being on the board is that you can make, you can say something like, we have voted for the equity lens. If we don't write also a policy with that and the, and the, and the district doesn't put it in an AR, then nothing happens with it. It's just, we've done something and everybody's like, what a nice idea. And nothing happens. It basically, it really didn't happen. So really writing policies to, there's a lot of these, as we saw in equity, to, to address a lot of this would be super exciting. So I kind of see this coinciding with that one.
Gordon?
I know this is just one part of the picture, but I just want to say that I would support the thing about expulsion. I, I'm willing to be told if I'm, from people who have more experience with this, if I'm, if there's a better way to think about it, but you know, we know that this is something that plays out inequitably, not, not particular to us, but across the country. And we can't put the responsibility on the parents of all kids who are facing expulsion to know enough to be able to navigate the system to file an appeal. So I think the idea of just saying that the board will view all, basically exactly what, what that proposal says, maybe there's some way to, to tweak it, but to me, that's a very concrete thing that, and it's small, but it's very specific that to me seems like a good idea.
Before we move on to the expulsions, can we finish with Kirti's? Is that okay for everyone? And then, um, I see that Kirti and Judy have their hands raised and then I'm happy to pop around if people want to play popcorn.
I was just thinking in terms of, I mean, Gordon was saying is like connecting the actions to the priority goals. And there may be a way as we're like collectively doing our mapping of our goals and whatnot to like tie in the specific action items to some of the larger broader categories, knowing that's not going to be the be all and end all of it, but it'll be one component of it, like the expulsions being one of the equity pieces that we have placed. And I, and this is no way one to diminish what has been done already, because there's a lot of work that we've been doing and the district has been doing and, and moving the equity lenses and the equity goals for that. But I do think, I mean, maybe in terms of, if we are going to send this to somebody to map out, maybe like do a category of like your action items tied to these particular categories that we can, um, we can look at in that, in that way as well.
Yeah, that was definitely a good idea. Judy?
I just wanted to say, I really do like this item and I like where both Kirti and maybe Laurel were sort of headed with, how do we know we have the right programs, procedures, things going on in our schools to confirm that our equity goals, that priority of equity is happening? And things like the climate survey or expulsion data and hopefully how kids are enrolling in different classes. I don't, I, I'm not really sure all the things we have, but we need to know that what we're doing and spending our time and resources and energy to get at this are make, are really making a difference. And so whatever those one or two or three measures could be, and I think the climate survey is one of those, would be important to make sure that the things we're putting in place to improve and our equity, equity in our schools and with our students and with our staff is working. So I like the link.
So are folks comfortable with me drawing a line between those two while we also give Laurel the opportunity to expand? Or is that premature? Okay. Sorry. I'll make that prettier before I finish.
Um, do you want me to go ahead?
Please.
So, um, my, my, the, the expulsion thing is, I, I have been sad and I was dismayed really. It went, and I can't talk about it, of course, but we had an expulsion come before us and everybody on the board, even the most, I would say conservative members of the board were like, no, this isn't an expulsion. And to know that the district has been like, yep, this kid should be expelled is, was, I, for me, it, it shows that what we saw in the numbers, I believe it was close to the end of the year when they were showing our numbers for expulsions for black, brown, you know, Pacific Islander are much higher. And then they have been in even previous years. So it shows the whole system and how it is where one person just reviews it and goes, yep, get them out of here. An expulsion destroys a child's life. It is absolutely, it, it's very hard to come back from this unless you have, you come from means of some sort. And if you come from, if you don't come from means, then you absolutely have, it's basically a school district who has one job saying, yeah, we're not going to do that job with you. It's not, it's not working out. Bye. And we shouldn't have that. That should not be an easy or simple choice. That should be the last resort. And we shouldn't be, I just feel like it happens because of, we have a culture right now. And I, I believe it's, as I say this, I'm hoping it's changing. And I believe it's changing. But we have a culture where this is allowed and happens and because, not because educators are mean or anything like that, because we don't fund it at a high enough level. We don't have the supports in place. The mental health supports aren't in place. There's just so many things that are necessary and need to start at grade school that are just not happening. So that was my intent at, at changing this. Honestly, don't know if it needs to be a board goal or it's just something I can bring, put on the agenda for a board meeting to change it. But I do see that it is an equity problem because it's happening at a much higher, an unproportional amount for our black, brown and Asian students. It's not okay. Indigenous, sorry, as well. And I should say sped and those in foster care. These are, those numbers are incredibly high. And when we get, got numbers last year, we got kind of weird numbers that were all lumped together. So we couldn't really see the problem kind of put before us in a way where we could go, oh, well, this is a concern. It was kind of put in a way to say it's a little higher, but it'll be fine. And I want, it, it's not going to be fine. So I think it's something we could work on.
Michelle, do you have questions or input or? Anything?
I, I just want to say that this has been brought up before and there are more than simply students living in poverty who are protected groups. And I think that this current board is very aware of the disparities. And I, I agree that expulsions should be looked at and we should, we should be working toward equity so that there are less racial and economic disparities. In expulsion, suspensions, you know, detentions, all the different punitive measures.
Referrals to the office at the elementary level. All of it. I agree. Not to jump in, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I got a little excited.
Thank you.
I'm just thinking about that recess time. Um, does anybody else have something to ask, emphasize? I'm going to stop trying to think of words. Does anybody else have something to add?
Oh, I just want to say really quickly that, that Kirti is pronounced with a T H for the T. That's the correct pronunciation.
Uh, thank you for that, Michelle, issue. I was going to just say, I'd be in agreement with like, I mean, Laurel, whatever you decide, if, if we follow this as a priority on this team or something that we need to specifically bring up policy by policy as we're going through it this year to like, on for an agenda, I think I would be okay with any, either of those. But I'm knowing that we're addressing not just one, certainly the expulsions, but also looking at some other ones as well too, on the, all the policies, kinds of things that Maya just pointed out as well.
Um, can I just add one thing?
Of course.
Um, I kind of, when I look at this, and this is one of the main reasons I came to be on the board was that in my work in Lynn County, when I worked there, it, I could see the direct correlation of students that were, that had been, had been students in our schools that were unhoused. And the amount of unhoused we were making, and we have the data to prove that we were making our own homeless population. So I really think there, we could as a district tap into, there is quite a bit of money to, to work about homelessness. And what better way to work on that is before it happens, really to support and show before it happens, really to support and show this is, we're, we're going to be working on this here. And so getting additional funds to work on this and that was always my, my evil intention from the very beginning because I, I watched how they work on it and spend tons, millions on the backend trying to fix something that's pretty, almost impossible to fix. They're doing great work, but it's a lot more money, a lot more time, a lot harder, a lot more resources on the backend. On the front end, it is keeping a child in school and realizing what it means when, when you remove somebody from school, what that does to the rest of their life is just one small part of it. It is, it does go with almost everything written in the equity columns here and some, a lot of the other columns. And that if we address these things and with CTE and all the others, that we will be creating a huge change in our community, not just we want to help these students, which we love helping students. I know we all do. That's why we're all here, but really a massive change in our community that we'll be able to show correlates directly to the funding and the work that we're putting in to support kids in, you know, transformative justice and all these things. So it excites me for us to work on this this year because it, it covers probably at least half of these post-its. So, thanks.
Gordon, do you have something to add?
Thanks. Not on the specific thing, but I have a kind of a process question or a proposal, which is, and maybe we can't do this, but I'm kind of thinking of the spirit of the stuff we said about trying to figure out how to make meetings be efficient. And I feel like there's, well, one is it seems to me we're probably not going to get to the working agreements tonight since we have an hour left. And I would, I don't know if we can, I would like to get to the point where we could say, whether it's like grouping things together or saying like, my memory of last year is we said like, here's our top four goals and then here's our second tier, like we had two tiers of goals. It wasn't just, it was like four and four or something like that, that we could walk out of tonight. Having said that, would be great, or if not, then at least by our next meeting. And and also some of these, some of these are things that all the board needs to do, needs to be involved in all the work. And some of them are things that we could have, I think, you know, task forces or working groups or committees, whatever we call them, that could do a lot of the work before it gets brought to a board for a final decision. And to the extent that people, I know this is all volunteer work, but to the extent that people, that some of us working with staff and, and district staff can, can play a leading role on that, that we could do more by having some of these things not have to be done, everything by the committee of seven. And I agree with, I agree with everything that was just said about the expulsion issue, but I also feel like we're now deep, kind of dealing with that at the level of as if we were the committee trying to figure out how that should work. And so I just wanted to pull back for a minute and, and ask, do people think, like, what's a reasonable goal for tonight? And is it reasonable to say we want to get a brief explanation of each of these and then, and then try to come to agreement on some of them that's a top tier or say, we're going to do that in the second meeting. I just, I feel like to some extent we're doing what we all said we didn't want to do in general about how we run meetings. Maybe I'm wrong. And I think everything has been valuable, but I'm trying to figure out how we can actually get this done and then get to the point where we can spend time actually doing this stuff.
Gordon, I'm personally open to whatever everybody wants to do and I'm here to support the consensus of the group. But I do want to remind ourselves that last year, when we did it as a majority vote, we had a lot of board members who were really disappointed with what those goals ended up being and, and we felt that disappointment throughout the year and it really impacted the work. So I was hoping to try to find a different approach than how we did it and trying to find an approach where with some creative thinking and, and some attention to the overlapping that we could see that all of this is all of this is stuff that we all agree with. So, so that's my only hesitation with saying, yeah, let's just do it like last year because it, it felt, it felt crappy to feel passionately about something. And then, you know, get my three dots and not have my three dots turn out into a successful goal. But if people feel like they want to go for the, you know, majority rules approach, let's do it. We can do that. It's hard because we're online and until we have our safety stuff figured out, we will continue to be online. But I'm open to whatever the, the consensus of the group is. I don't know if you still have your hand raised because you want to talk again?
I do.
Okay.
I, I'm, like I said, I'm fine doing it this way too. I, and I do, I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can move forward. And maybe that also involves having like a, I know we've done this in the past, like having a check-in in January or February 1st where we say, okay, so we said we wanted to do all these things and now it's been five months or whatever it's been. And, and now we have five months left. And so given that, like, what are the things we want to focus on then? So that we, it's not like tonight is the last chance that everybody has to say, here are the top priorities. Cause I agree, these things, I mean, it feels like everything, there's nothing here that I think somebody thinks is a bad idea. And then the question of like, how much of it can we get done? And when we get somewhat down the road, what do we want to focus on for the last few months that we have? So I'm, I would, I understand, I know what you said is right. I'd be happy to do it that way also.
Oh, I just, I just wanted us to have the chance to see the connections. And I'm, I, I know that we had a difficult year last year, but I'm, I'm feeling confident about trusting our staff and that's not necessarily something that everyone shares. And then I was hoping to take that step of, of having a lot of these things linked up and then talked about and prioritized, but I, I am not a
What you were saying is you're trusting the staff to do something that would then come back to the board for us to make final decisions about, not that the staff
A hundred percent. And even if Andy says this isn't doable, we can say, guess what? We need you to find a way. Not doable isn't an answer. There was no way, shape or form that I was intending this to be handed off and not do the work ourselves. I was just hoping for some support in getting the work done so that we could include everyone's voice, but not get bogged down in, you know, the leaves on the tree when what we need to do is see a forest. Kirthy and then Laurel?
All right, I'm going to keep this brief. So I would say that I was expecting today for this portion is to get everybody's thoughts and feelings on this because it's hard to even categorize until you know what people are actually saying or thinking. I would expect this to like go through the mapping process, which we're doing now is the link and then maybe tying the actions to the overall goals in this. Then we can see gaps on some places that have lack of action or a lack of things on those, or they're just a goal and one of those things on here. I think we have to do the sorting exercise. And I think it's important for people to, who are watching us to see us do, to certain extent, explain our priorities too. Cause I think like we said, the good thing is that we are all in agreement. There's nothing on here that I would like remotely think is honestly not a priority, like at this point. But what, getting into form, that is, here are the categories that are linked. Maya has already done a big chunk of that on here. What are those, what are the other key components of it that can be linked in terms of a priority goal? What are some key actions that have already been identified under this on here that puts us in a frame here? And then we can go back to the district and be like, here's what's happening in these categories. Is it meeting these things, actions and goals? Are we doing this? Is it just a purely mapping exercise at this, at this point? I wasn't expecting today to have us agree on what our priorities are necessarily. This is a half of a retreat for as far as I know. I think it'd be really, really just doing a disservice to not actually have at least a minimal discussion on these and seeing what this come out with. So like, I'm not sure if we were looking at more actionable priorities for tonight, but I really wanted at least get a heads up on what what people were thinking behind this so that we can put them in an action plan that makes sense.
Absolutely. I'm eager to continue through them for sure. Laurel?
So I'm, I'm still concerned and it seems like we keep just bringing up it up over and over again, how the plan that was made and maybe that's what happens. I, I don't know any of the people that you're talking about and it's concerning to me when this is our board process. This isn't the district's process. It's our board process.
I don't think we're doing that plan. I'm sorry.
I really, I really need to not have people tell me I'm wrong every time I say something. I need to, this is my feelings and thoughts on this. And so the reality is I I feel like that is, I guess, being moved and we have a Robert's rules where we do have a process that we're supposed to use. And if we are not going to use that, then I, we are supposed to vote as a board not to use it. I mean, I, at this point, I I don't know. I, I, I feel like it's going to be, it feels a little bit hopeless to me. And I, I guess it's just from listening to people decide how to do this without me being in the room and to be part of this at all. And so it's, it seems very similar to a lot that I've already dealt with where it's just go along with it. And I'm, and, and it's very much, I, I haven't even talked about the things that are, I, I really feel like need to be done this year. Absolutely. We could have a completely different board in one year. And so there's a lot of work that needs to happen and I, and I, and while I like good feelings and everybody had feeling great, I also just need priorities set and it not to take until November, December. And that we know what we're going to be working on and we come to agreement on it. And that may mean some more meetings, but we can need to figure it out.
Alicia?
Thanks Maya. Hey, um, so I know this is taking a long time and I have to say, I feel much more educated. So thank you Maya for slowing down the process and for giving people a chance to explain because my priorities have changed just in a little bit of conversation we've had because I've gotten more clarity on what certain things mean. So I'd like to just continue with, I know it's going to take a little while, but people sharing their thoughts and then maybe we can bundle as you know, Flo, the insurance agent says, but maybe not. And maybe we can tease out a little more so that Andy's able to share with us what's possible and what's not. So I appreciate it. I'm here. Let's, if we can continue, I'd be really happy. So that's my vote. Go, go deep with these, just like, you know, you've set up. So thanks. I know we'll probably meet again, but I think it's really important. Thank you.
I know it's 7:15 and we only have 44 minutes left. Do people want to take a break or do you want to push through and see how many of these we can get through? Does anybody need a break?
I'm going to just go ahead and go, I'm going to grab a little thing and come back up in here. So it'll all be on a second.
I need a short break.
How long do you need Judy?
Okay, with five minutes or just a few minutes.
Okay, let's do five minutes and then we'll come up and see if we're done with expulsions. People are back and ready. If you could turn on your cameras so we know you're here, that'd be great. Okay. So unless we have something else to say about expulsions, we've gotten through six of these. I'm going to suggest that we move on to the next one. Okay. Improve outcomes for students with disabilities. It seems pretty straightforward, but Alicia, I would like to invite, not to put you on the spot, but whoever submitted this one, if they would like to add to it, please do so.
I was hoping for a pro. You go, that's not funny anymore. Okay. So here's the thing. You, I, I know you all know that the outcomes for students with disabilities are poor at best. I'm more of the mind of, I say the what and the staff say the how, because I'm not a professional in this area. So that's why it's pretty brief and to the point. I think we need to look at that and then have ideas or theories or actions, if you will, on how we, how we do that. And that I would leave to the staff with, of course, we would be informed and we would have inputs, but that's what I have. Thanks. And I know there's other ones in there. And so I'm fine with my short concise one being married to other ones that are more involved, if people are comfortable with that. Thanks.
Judy, do you have something you want to add?
Well, just I'm one that I would say would link with that if, if people, do we want to do it that way? Maya, you want to just go through them? You're muted.
When we get to yours, we can link it and, or else we can jump to yours right now. I just want to make sure that if anybody else has a question for Alicia about what she means by this, they have that chance. Okay. So let me track yours down, Judy. Um, oh, look at that. It's the next one.
Okay.
And I, you have to expand on this because it was one of the ones that was cut short and I apologize for that.
So I was looking at two, I, I, I also agree. I know we're on this path, but I really would like to see the numbers of kids in learning for all. And it might even align with what Laurel was saying, you know, more kid, I mean, our kids in special ed should be in inclusive settings. And I know there's a lot of work around that, but I just want that to be a real clear goal, which will also hopefully come out immeasurably better outcomes for kids on IP. So that's what I'll say, but that is something that is non-negotiable for me. They really need to be out of self-contained classrooms and not excluded from not belonging to their schools. So.
The only thing I would add to that, perhaps if, 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 if that's possible is supporting learning for all with the resources necessary for having that done in a way that leads to the positive outcomes, which we are hoping for. I, I know I hear concern from families and teachers that, that without the support, which then circles back to the understaffed component that we are facing, that, that this is, this is a challenge that, that part of that goal needs to be resourced, not just dollars, but with the people who are currently non-existent in our staffing pool.
Totally. I totally agree with that. I mean, to me, to be successful, it's got to take the right, right staffing configuration, training, resources, support. So.
Right. Because without it, it's, it, it is, it is setting our, our students who need an accessible education up to not be experiencing positive inclusion.
I agree.
Yeah.
This is why, that's why I'm on.
Laurel?
Uh, yeah. So this also goes along with the one I put out for revamping all of special education. And that's really coincides really well with yours, Judy Edwards. The way we have it set up now, I think most people don't understand, I didn't understand when I got on the board. It's a completely separate school. They, they're, the person that they answer to is not even the, the buck should stop at the principal. And they should be able to lead their school as far as I understand the structures and please stop me if I'm wrong. They run, can you hear me? Okay. Um, they will be, right now, people go, as far as I understand, and Andy, please correct me if I'm wrong, Kat Lang is the leader for our special education staff. And, and that, and that's outside their schools. And many times what I've been told is And, and that, and that's outside their schools. And many times what I've been told is that she, she's not even coming to school. She's understanding what they're dealing with. It should, the whole outside structure of sped all through our district means that kids get bused all the way across the district to go to the school that works for them, which is really the school that works for the district, not for that child. So yeah, it's funding, it's all these other things that go along with it. It's also a hiring somebody to look at this and having the, have it, to have a board goal this big of what I'm proposing would be hiring somebody to look at it to, to, because we can't say, hey, staff, we want to do this massive thing and you guys do it, could, along with all your normal jobs. It would be hiring somebody who is specialized in that and funding that. So it'd basically be creating the idea behind it this year to fund it for next year, to, to, to put all the policies and agreements and everything in place and then have it funded for next year. It is having those kids included and it is, I mean, parents are gonna be scared of things they don't understand. I think 90% of the reason parents are scared and I was scared is nobody talks to us. We're just trying, we just know it's not going well. That's all we really know. And we're just fighting to make sure our kid is seen. And if we're told, well, this is the only way it's done and this is how it has to be done, that's what's gonna happen. And that's what people are gonna fight for. That doesn't mean it's the best outcome. That's why I propose hiring somebody who's a professional in this to show that aligns with our, the board values, but to show the best way to go about this. And that will ally a lot of fears. Having a clear person in charge of the planning and the communications.
Does anybody else have questions or comments about the goal of effectively implementing learning for all? Okay. This one, do you want to expand for whoever? Put this one up.
I, I put that one up and I, I don't feel that I need to expand, except that I feel like the times that the equity lens was said to be used, I didn't feel like, you know, I didn't understand what that meant and um, it kind of shut down questioning or discussion and I don't want that to happen this year.
Are we all understanding of Michelle or does somebody have a question or need to add something to that? This one's actually mine. The only thing that I might clarify is the part in the parentheses where I say is determined through metrics defined using the equity lens. I, I, what I mean here is not using the same metrics that we have used over and over and over, but thinking and innovating into how we define positive and fruitful experiences in our schools. So a double layer of equity in terms of centering it. And I'm open to any questions that anybody has or comments or it's pretty straightforward. Okay. I know this is one of the ones that had to be shortened to be included. So Laurel, if you want to expand, I'm also happy to pull up what you wrote if you would like that.
I, yeah, I'll just say Oregon School Board Association supported the white supremacist racist work that was happening against me the entire school year. There is no time that, I was also told, you can reach out to them, they're there for you. They hadn't answered none of my questions. The one email that they answered, they told me to go ask Christine, who is also one of the people who are perpetuating the racist and white supremacist. Well, she was, she was putting it forward. It actually isn't a policy. She was just, that was her interpretation of a, of a policy. So everything was made to support this. When I talk about removal of OSBA, we fund them. I, I don't know the exact amount. I think Gordon said it was $20,000 a year. We are funding a system that condones white supremacy and racism. So if I am willing to answer questions around this, I feel like just talking about it makes it just seem like I'm complaining about how I was treated and doesn't feel good on my side. But the reality is, they have, they had somebody call me and tell me all black people in Eugene are mad at me because of my behavior on the school board. Not true. They, I had a, the conference that Maya attended, I was also supposed to attend and they, at the last minute, pulled that and said I couldn't use it because I told them, I, at that point, which was nearer to the end of the school year, I was confronting them on their behavior towards me. So we either condone racism and cronyism and the structures that support it, or we say, we don't, we don't condone this. We have our own policies. We can write our own policy. What they do is, isn't helpful. It actually led to a lot of the pain and and what happened last year. If we had different direction, we probably would have had a better year in a lot of regards. Because the direction was to support white supremacy and anything that was being said in that regard, the tone policing, the, the, I, I'm supposed to have a lawyer and access to a lawyer. I filed for that. They said they would call me back and then I never, I was just, I dropped off the face of the earth. And then my emails, none of my, my messages were answered. Meanwhile, I hear Judy's messages are getting answered. Gordon's messages are getting answered. The superintendent messages, Christine's messages are getting answered. So it was obviously me who was saying, hey, I'm dealing with racism and white supremacy. Could you do something about it? I, this is wrong. And me believing that they would do something and nothing at all happening. In fact, the opposite. We have the ability to walk away from that.
Michelle, do you want to add to this and then Gordon?
Um, I just want to say that I understand that OSBA was not helpful. And what I'm hearing, since I don't know the full, you know, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying Laurel. And what it sounds like happened is that they poured salt on an already open wound. And I would need to know more about this entire, you know, the function of OSBA and what the repercussions of this would be. Because quite frankly, you know, institutionalized education is built on foundations of white supremacy and racism as well. So I'm, I'm really struggling with this.
I'm, I have to turn my camera off because my, my internet is shaky. I don't know if there was a question in there. I heard some of it. It's what I heard that you were struggling with the idea of it and that you, you're muted Michelle.
Did, I thought I was done talking. I just need to know more. And I don't know if you heard what I said was that they were in a sense pouring salt on an open wound. And, and that's, you know, it sounds like that to me and, and that's not helpful, but I need to know the repercussions of extracting the board from this organization. Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that. And I, I will say that you'll probably hear a lot of perceived repercussions. And my answer to that is what is the allowable amount of racism? So because we have access to lawyers and people who do policy work and can, and we can use the policies we already have in place. And we don't need, really mostly what happens is we go to them to ask, is this, hey, is this appropriate? But there's lawyers in town that do also this kind of work.
And, and I really feel like there was blatant racism that occurred on this very school board.
Yeah.
Gordon?
I know, I know we're not deciding anything tonight, but I just wanted to say where I'm at with this. I know that, that the things you're saying Laurel are true. I mean, I, I know, I remember in real time my writing emails and phone calls and getting quick responses and you writing emails and leaving phone messages and getting nothing. I also disagree with some, you know, the important legislative positions that OSBA has taken and a couple of them have testified in the other direction in Salem. My understanding, my understanding right now is that, so, so what, so I would not want to use them for those kind of things. My understanding of the main thing that we get is a way for 20,000 bucks is being updated on changes in state law and policy that we need to adopt our policy to. And because we're, at least for the time being, operating without an in-house counsel, some things that we can say that we need legal sign-off, I would not turn to OSBA for like strategic advice or a final word in policy. But my understanding is that to read, to do those things without OSBA would cost, would be difficult. We don't, may not have the staff or it would cost a lot more money. And that's what puts me in the position of wanting to say, okay, here's the few things that we're gonna use them for that are worth 20,000 bucks and these other things we're not gonna use them for. However, if this comes to a vote and, and everybody still feels the way they feel, I would support you Laurel because I think that the things you're saying are, are true. That's all.
Anybody else have questions or additions here?
I would only say that if, if this isn't a board goal, I will just, I would be adding it to an agenda at some point. So it doesn't have to be a board goal. So it could also be considered as really wanting to educate the board in the appropriate manner in that everybody's here and can hear about it, that this is we should not be aligning ourselves with a service that condones and supports a racist and agenda. It's called institutional racism. It's called systemic racism. And if we're saying, we're talking about equity for the last hour and then saying, hmm, not sure about this. We're saying it's okay. So that's my last thing I have to say.
Thanks Laurel. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, and we'll move on to the next one. We have about 15 minutes left. Do we want to do five more minutes of this and then a debriefing or do we just want to push through and only do this and? No, okay, I'm seeing Alicia, Alicia's asking for the debriefing. Let's do five more minutes and then debrief. Whoever's this is, if you want to expand or.
This is me. I, this would also be something where we would have to create a plan and work with other districts. And I mean, this is probably the biggest form of my idea around this is to create a regional high school where it's not just us paying for it, but asking for other school districts to be part of this and CTE is one of the big things. We're not graduating kids that can support themselves on any level, on any level right now. Like, really, the only kids that do well are the ones that have parents that have the means to help. And if you don't, you're going to be having an awfully hard time to survive in this, this world right now. I've, I, I proposed a, a program. We, we have in our special education, I have three, as you know, three special kids that were part of the special education program. Um, they have lived experience of being a student in special education. Right now, we have a system where those kids who have lived experience and different ability levels cannot, they can apply, but they probably will not be looked at as actual teaching assistants. Even though we know in a lot of instances, lived experience is one of the most powerful de-escalation tools. Somebody having experienced what your frustrations are. So that's just one example for, that could be a CTE program. You know, we, I, I feel like, I don't even talk about outside the box. I'm just like, get rid of the box. Let's redo this and make a plan for something that where we are actually, we have kids, when they hit 16, they can decide if they want to be an electrician, they want to be a welder, they want to HVAC. If they're doing this work and we're working with the companies that are local that do this work as well, they're this could absolutely happen and I would be so excited because we would actually be, what's happening in other states and I, we can ask, Andy, talk to me a little bit about what's happening in other states. I don't know, obviously, this isn't what I do for a living. But I'm very excited to know that we are looking at the, you know, we always look in, in my work in, in social services, we always look at the the socio-indicators for health and things like that. You know, what's the reasons why people aren't doing well? But I think we should be also looking at this for education and really seeing where people, what are we missing and how can we get it to them and how we can apply it to our students and, and really support educators. Because if, if we're only looking at college, which is what we still do, even though we have student CTE programs, really, the message coming to my kids' head is like college, college, college. And I'm like, and they don't want to, my only son that's in school right now doesn't want to go to college. If we're giving him another message that is just as valuable and we see and show the value, we can, we are, we are also supporting our educators. Or like, why am I teaching this kid this when they absolutely do not want to be in this classroom for this? We can do something that's actually helping again, our society, our community and our students and, and teachers.
Maya, you're muted.
Yes, sorry. Thank you Laurel. And I see your hand Gordon and I'm gonna call a stop after your comment. We can come back to this. I don't mean to say that we'll never talk about this again. I just want us to have a chance to debrief and be done at a hard stop at eight o'clock. There's some of us whose kids have a first day tomorrow and I know my phone is buzzing from my daughter who's wanting my attention.
So just really quickly, one thing that's not on this list, but that I think we need to do to make CTE work and probably other things too, is to have a schedule that allows kids to access CTE programs that are not at their own high school. And it's not like you can't, you're not gonna leave your high school to go someplace else for a 55-minute or hour and 15-minute. block on, on, you know, learning to be an electrician or something. So I don't know if it's half day or something, but I think that we, we, whether it's a regional high school or not, to do something that's not at your own high school, we need to have something other than the current three by five schedule. So I'll just say that.
Okay, I, I totally lied. That's not going to be the last comment because I just want to give a shout out to Andy and his leadership team because this is completely on their radar and the schedule is something that I, I predict will look vastly different next year. And this specific thing is, is being included in those conversations. And then the only other thing I'll add is that we have a new president at LCC and I'm on the transition committee for her and have been emphasizing the need for us to partner with LCC. So in addition to the school districts listed in Laurel's suggestion, I would also add LCC as an important partner and unions, our trade unions need to be part of those conversations as well. All right, it's 7:51. How we made it through, looks like about half of the things. So we get to have another meeting to discuss this and it sounds like maybe my hope for relational health focus should be replaced with just working on business stuff. So we can shift that, I'm, I'm hearing that, so we can shift that and work on getting through these other things and finding a time to I mean, a time to meet when it works with everyone's schedule. If anybody is a schedule master, please volunteer your services. I would welcome anybody who's really good at wrangling schedules because it's been difficult to even secure this time slot. I just want to go around in a circle and give space for anybody who, I know you didn't want to share at the beginning, but maybe now you feel compelled to share. I, I, I don't have a debrief question because we shifted gears. So I apologize. Kirsty?
I just wanted to say thanks to you and Gordon, everyone who's put together all of this for us because like I know that you've been like wrangling schedules and stuff. And I appreciate that that, that's been put into at least getting this on the page and at least starting the initial organization. It's very helpful.
Thanks Kirsty. Laurel?
Sorry, my I don't know why my computer stuff's on. I paid enough money for everything. I just wanted to say the, the reality of I, I was having a moment to sit with it is the trust that was broken when all those complaints came in about me and I wasn't contacted or told about until August is part of the reason why I'm having these issues. This is a real thing. The where I, I, there was a breakdown in, in communication and, and people I trusted didn't tell me things that I needed to know. And I am now sitting in the position going, I don't know the people, the players involved and it concerns me for them to make decisions. I will say that I will attempt to rewrite some of my things to, to be put in a place that's and clearer than what I thought we were going to have a whole discussion. Without knowledge, I thought it was going to be more the process that we had last year and then it's none of that. So I'll try to, I'll rewrite some of my things. So some of my post-its may change to be clear to one of the, the things I've talked about tonight. So I think almost all of mine came up. And and so then if you take it to this person and hearing you say that it's going to come back to us after that and that no decisions will be made without all of us making these decisions. It's my attempt to say, I understand where I'm sitting in this and why I'm sad and concerned and, and have some fear around this and owning that and saying, I will try to work with the process, but I need, I need to fix a few things that I put forward. So, sorry, taking so long.
Thanks Laurel. Alicia?
Thanks Maya. So I know you had one plan in mind and we kind of changed quickly. But I really appreciated the conversation tonight. Like I said before, you guys, we went deeper on things that if they had been handed to someone, I may not have understood or they may not have understood. So I know we've taken more time than expected on this, but it's really important. It kind of gives me hope as we look at what's possible. I mean, these are big ticket items, if you will. And if we get a few of them on, on our goals and we work towards them, they're going to make a huge difference for our community and the students in our school. So I'm excited and I hate scheduling. I'm sorry you have to do it. And I'll try to be as timely as possible in getting my response back to you to help make it go as easy as possible. But thank you all for, for sharing in depth on what you put forward. It really made a difference to understand it and to hear it from you all. Thanks.
Thanks Alicia. Judy?
I, I first of all, I want to thank you and Gordon and leadership as, I mean, Rob and Andy, who I know have spent a lot of time putting this together. It takes time. And you're for your flexibility because I also have to say, you know, I, my feeling when I first came, I sort of felt disconnected. You know, we hadn't met. We haven't really had a lot of time together. So I really appreciated hearing people explain their thinking. Because I feel like so much of what we're talking about, there is a lot of alignment. And so I think it was a valuable use of time. Hopefully it'll go faster next time. And then we can figure out next steps from the board because I think this is something. Yes, I definitely want to work in collaboration with superintendent and superintendent's office, but in a way I don't want to also give away all of our leadership and power on that either. So I think this is a good balance for me. So thank you. Thank all of the board members.
Thanks Judy. Andy?
Thanks Maya. It's been very helpful for me just to be able to sit back and listen to people explain their thinking and what they meant when they were, when they were suggesting goals and agreements. Just to reassure, I believe that my job is to fully understand what the goal has or what the board has as goals for the year. And try to, to find a way to make recommendations to present to the board about things that we could do to make your goals a reality, not in any way to suggest what would be possible or necessarily easy or convenient for the year. I, I fully expect that the, the board is going to come up with a challenging set of goals. They believe betters the district and challenges us as an administrative team and a workforce. So absolutely would be willing to help to craft language that best captures your thinking as a group. But in no way usurp your right to be the primary stewards of this district for the community.
Thanks Andy. Does anybody else have something they want to share?
Yeah, I just want to say that I've been around a lot of different boards and I've never seen this depth of conversation and engagement with a topic like this. So that this is really, I know it's, it's, it may not feel all put together and may feel a little bit messy and that's okay at this stage of the game. And I'm looking forward to seeing what, what we can get done this year and where your priorities are. So this is happy to engage in this work with you all. And I apologize, I keep getting notifications of meetings hitting my calendar. So if you're hearing that, that's, that's what's happening here.
You have a full schedule. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they want to share? Okay, well, seeing as it's eight o'clock and nobody else is raising their hand, I adjourn this meeting. Hope you all have a great night and see you tomorrow.
Happy first day of school, Maya and everyone else's kids are going in.
Thanks. I'm back at you Kirsty.